Megan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, let us begin. Welcome, everybody, to the agenda of the City Council Close Session and the regular meeting of the City of Coachella, the Council sitting as a Coachella sanitary district, Coachella Fire Protection District, Coachella Financing Authority, Coachella Education, No and Government Access Cable Channel Corporation, Coachella Water Authority, and the Successor Agency to the Coachella Redevelopment Agency is July twenty seventh, two thousand and two. Again, pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty-one, along with the Governor's State of Emergency Declaration issued on March fourth, two thousand and twenty, this meeting would be conducted via teleconference. Move on now. Going to ask that our city attorney take note of the record or the attendance. I did get a call from council member Galarza that he is stuck in traffic and he's racing here. And I have not heard from council member Davoto. Okay, it's a council member that will be ten minutes late. With that, we'll move forward on the virtual public meeting. Is there a motion to approve a resolution twenty-two dash seventy-six? There's a motion. I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We'll move on now to approve of the agenda. At this time, Council Board Corporation Authority may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date. Is there any changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
No, Mr. Mayor, no changes.
Okay, well, can we get a motion to approve the agenda? There's a motion. Is there a second that I hear? There's a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. We'll move on now to public comments. These are public comments on the closed session items. Is there any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on now to adjournment to close session. We'll be going into close session.
Thank you. This is Jeff. I think we are just able to to be added as panelists, and I see Kim has just been added too. So I don't know if Kim, you want to start us off?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. Happy to be here and not talking about COVID. I believe that we had a presentation that able to be shared. We can kind of just talk through it. You let me know what works best.
It'd be best if you share your screen with the presentation.
Okay, I can do that. Can you see where it says blue zones?
I can see your presentation.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Okay, so thank you for giving us a few minutes to talk with you tonight. Dr. Leong and I are really excited about a potential project. And we had the opportunity to chat with Dr. Martin and wanted to bring it to the full council might be something that the City of Coachella is interested in participating with us on. And so what we're looking to do is to develop a blue zone or a number of them, actually five of them around Riverside County. And for those of you that are familiar with blue zones, or even if you're not, blue zones are areas where they have high concentrations of people who live much longer than the expected lifespan. And so we have one of those here in Loma Linda where people live well beyond the average lifespan of our residents in Southern California. The original ones also in Loma Linda were in Greece, Costa Rica, Japan, and Italy. And so it was really when it was found that people were living longer in these areas, there was a lot of study that was done around these programs. And so Dr. Leong is going to take you through a lot of that work, just very briefly, so that you understand kind of what goes into it. But essentially, what we're here today to to see if you are willing to participate in is blue zones before they start a project, they do an assessment. And so we are looking to do an assessment and hoping that Coachella would be one of the areas that would be included in the assessment. And the assessment would really look at the city's readiness to move forward on a blue zones project. Do they have the infrastructure in place? Are they at a right place in kind of their city lifespan? And if the answer to those questions is yes, then we could look at how we would move forward and implement kind of a blue zones project to try to move the city to becoming a blue zone area. So the assessment itself is is not inexpensive, but as your public health department, we have identified funding to be able to cover the cost of the assessment. So if you agree to participate in the assessment, it would be at no cost to the city. We would cover that cost. And then where cost may come in is down the road if we started to engage in this project. But Dr. Leong is going to go over kind of how that typically works. So, Dr. Leong, why don't I turn it over to you? And then I'm happy to help with questions later.
Thank you, Kim. So so Kim kind of touched on, you know, how, you know, most people know blue zones from the National Geographic Research, highlighting different communities across the world where people live longer than expected. And, you know, on the right side, you see some of the patterns or the themes that we see in those communities. So, you know, it's people who who tend to sort of have physical activity built into their regular day where people have purpose-driven lives, where there's a chance to sort of relax. They're eating a lot of vegetables in their diet. They have close community, and they have this strong sense of inclusion or belonging. Next slide. Thank you, Kim. And and, you know, as Kim alluded to, so the other part of the Blue Zones program is, you know, the group has actually taken all of this research and these findings, and they've applied it to a certification program that cities or counties or communities can undergo to see if they can adopt as many of those learnings as possible. And so there are really two phases, and Kim kind of alluded to both. The first is an assessment phase, and then the second is a transformation phase. The assessment phase usually takes nine to twelve months and involves the deep dive into the community, taking a look at sort of different types of data, talking with community groups, finding out what strengths or opportunities, you know, there might be with a community. And, you know, the Blue Zone Certification Program has actually been around for a little while. There have been at least sixty communities across the country that have participated in the Blue Zone Certification Program. So that's not just the assessment portion, but for those communities that then decided or that were determined to be, you know, good places for a Blue Zones project, communities that then went on to undergo sort of a transformation project. And that certification, which is a second step, and we're just talking about the assessment piece, but should a community go on to that certification step? That then involves sort of a multi-dimensional approach to changing the life radius, you know, everything from impacting the workplace and schools and, and, you know, trying to offer healthy options upfront in a menu. You know, trying to make maybe fruits or vegetables available in more convenient places in grocery stores. And all of these small nudges can result in really big changes for a community. Next slide. So this is this is really the last slide of two more slides. So the Blue Zones approach, you know, is really flipping the the typical model of healthcare. So if you think about, you know, the approach you might see in a doctor's office, usually, you know, a doctor will will kind of go over all the things that someone might want to change. Maybe it's losing weight or controlling their blood pressure. And the focus really is on asking people to change their individual behavior. But Blue Zones is really taking the opposite approach, which is trying to change the environment. And then by doing so, sort of nudging behavior almost unconsciously or subconsciously to support and promote health. And and by doing all those small things, whether it's, you know, changing the environment in a restaurant or a workplace, the hope is that all of these changes together will have a big impact. So the next slide. So Fort Worth is is actually, you know, one of those sixty sixty-plus communities that has undergone a Blue Zones Certification Program. The reason we we wanted to use them as an example is they're not a small community. You can see there almost a million people. And, you know, when they started their journey back in two thousand and fourteen, Blue Zones always uses the Gallup Wellbeing Index, which is a national benchmark, to to look at how communities are sort of pre and post certification. And when Fort Worth first started, they were towards the bottom of that Wellbeing Index, ranked number one eighty-five out of one hundred ninety. And you can see that three years later, in two thousand and seventeen, their ranking moved up to number fifty-eight. And that Wellbeing Index incorporates many, many different components of health behavior. But as an example, you know, Fort Worth as a city saw really some big changes in in behavior, you know, in a decrease in smoking by thirty-one percent, an increase in physical exercise by almost seventeen percent. You know, people self-reporting that they're feeling like they're thriving more, and then an increase in civic pride, which, you know, as you all know, is tied to social cohesion and many other positive metrics. And overall, in Fort Worth, they saw that the neighborhoods with the greatest disparities or challenges with equity actually also had the biggest gains and improvement. In Fort Worth, they ended up with over a hundred work sites that were Blue Zones certified, over sixty restaurants that were Blue Zones certified, and over forty schools. And, you know, for those sites to become Blue Zones certified, they had to, you know, meet certain thresholds and practices. And all in all, you know, in Fort Worth, they calculated that they they saved about two hundred sixty-eight million dollars per year in healthcare savings as well as an improved workforce productivity. Because with with the certification programs, you tend to see a decrease in absenteeism, sick calls, and therefore an increase in productivity. So, you know, that's just an example of what communities can expect to see. And and I think that brings us to the end of the presentation, and we're happy to entertain any questions. But thank you for the opportunity to to share about this assessment.
Well, we appreciate you both. Counsel, any questions?
I do. I have a few. When would the assessment begin?
We have, we actually have an executed contract already.
We can barely hear you.
Can you hear me now? Is that any better?
That's better.
Okay, so we do have an executed contract with Blue Zones from the county perspective, and so we are in the process now of soliciting kind of concurrents with the jurisdictions that they want to participate, and then we'll be forming a steering committee and a planning committee. And so I would say within probably the next two months, we would start to take a look at data, start to want to meet with community groups and leaders. Dr. Leong, would you concur with that kind of timeline?
Okay, I mean, I completely support the assessment. I can't see why we wouldn't go forward with it. I do want to thank you both, you know, because you guys have really put a lot of great programs in the last few years. You know, whether it's an effort to increase physical health, mental health, and also increase healthy eating habits here in the City of Coachella. You know, we did one in the library, and it was very successful. We had to do a lot of groundwork, but we had a good turnout. So I do want to, I do appreciate it, and thank you both for your efforts. Thank you.
No, I have a question, Kim. You, the certification process, so you're asking, your ask is that we agree to an assessment, or have you chosen the City of Coachella? Do we have to apply for this process through the assessment, the outcome of the assessment, or how does that work? Because I just want to know some a little more details regarding the selection process.
Yeah, that's a great question. So Dr. Leong and I met with our teams and looked kind of across the county. And our goal is really to pick a variety of different areas. And, you know, the City of Coachella has been such a great partner for us and always kind of willing to try new things and different programs with us. And so I think that really played a large amount into our decision to come to you and request the city's participation. On top of that, you know, you do have a very engaged city. Your leadership through the council, you know, you you guys are at everything. I see you all the time. And so I know that you are, the community is tight and strong. And I think that that gives a leg up on creating this kind of environment where we can see success in a Blue Zones project. And so there is no application process, or if you all decide that you want to move forward with us, we will ask for probably a representative that would serve on a steering committee or planning committee with us. And then, you know, that person or an additional person, however you wanted to set it up, we would make sure is staying informed in terms of all the meetings that we're doing and gathering of community input. Probably ask for some data. We have a lot of data from a health perspective, but data that deals specifically with the city, we might ask for from your representative. But then at the end of the assessment, the Blue Zones team will make a recommendation as to whether or not a jurisdiction is in a position to really be successful when moving forward with implementing a Blue Zones project. So if at the end of the assessment, they said, yes, we think we could successfully do this in the City of Coachella, then we would have another question, another conversation about if you wanted to proceed with implementing a Blue Zones project. And I will be a hundred percent upfront. If we were to move into the project phase, it is a multi-year project, and it is also multimillion dollars. Now, Blue Zones historically have had success in getting philanthropy involved and donating to support these kinds of approaches. A lot of times employers have been supportive of this because they are seeing things like decrease in absenteeism. And so to them, it's a win. And so, you know, we certainly wouldn't be coming back to the city and asking you all to front all the money to move forward on a Blue Zones project. Part of the preparation would be looking at funding, looking at where we could draw down resources, and coming to some kind of an agreement on what that would look like.
Very nice. Thank you, Kim.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm excited about it. I just pulled a, you know, the John Bonner books, that Bonner books, and I was reading some of the the overall tips that were like that came out of the Blue Blue Zone, the original five cities. And one of them is a strict alcohol moderately, one to two glasses a day. So I was agreeing, you know, obviously, there's other ones where, you know, eat the smallest amount of meal in the afternoon. So I was agreeing, you know, obviously, there's other ones where, you know, eat the smallest amount of meal uh in the afternoon, evening. I've been down sort of like surprised me. Um, and uh, but uh, very cool, very excited about this. I didn't even know Blues was a thing. And uh, it's it's nice. I'm just reading like specifically like the. Cities that, you know, uh, what, you know, how how each one of them is specifically there. And then Melinda didn't drink coffee, so I was worried that coffee was a thing, but I'm glad it's not listed here as a. Uh, as 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 something that we 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 still drink, so. Um, but all good, so I'm excited about this and look forward to how we can make sure we make it healthier for Tella. Thank you.
So I think one of the requests is that if we go down this road. That the city join an ad hoc committee or that someone from the city and now what do you need? Do you need a council member or do you need staff?
Um, I think that that's really up to you. Um, it would be somebody who would um be involved in regular meetings. Um, and probably was kind of the workings of the city and where we would go for data, who the the community members are that we could interact with. Um, and so we'd be looking to to you all to make that recommendation if it's. Out of the city manager's office or an elected official, I think it could be done either way.
Okay, well, at this point, I think that there's general support, and I imagine that a MOU or something would be coming forward to the council, so. We can decide then. Alrighty, well, thank you for the presentation and uh you guys have a good rest of the evening. Uh, we do have uh next presentation is congratulating Borrego Health on the opening of the new Coachella Valley Community Health Center. In Coachella, so. I believe we have a uh a little proclamation. Uh, council member Larsa, you want to present that? Well, uh, well, we'll just read it. And it says, whereas Borrego Health, uh Borrego Community Health Foundation of inland Southern California. Providing healthcare services for underserved communities in Coachella Valley undertook the project to establish Coachella Valley Community Health Center. And whereas residents of Coachella, India, La Quinta, Mecca, and Thermal now have access to the local area to healthcare services equally. Primary care, family practices, pediatric and. Ob- obesity. Additionally, services are planned for the for later this year and beyond. And whereas um I, Stephen A. Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Coachella, and the City Council of the City of Coachella. Uh, by the powers vested in us, do I congratulate Borrego Community Health Foundation. On the grand opening of the Coachella Valley Community Health Center. And we urge all the citizens of the city of Coachella to recognize and support this new healthcare center in our community. So. Councilmember Galard said that why do I look at myself when I say? It looks like myself. Um, we have a small presentation on coronavirus.
You're with us in person, Miss.
Yes, uh, nice to see everyone. Mayor and members of the council, real brief update on coronavirus. Um, just a couple of snapshots with regards to the cat, uh, the state and the county. Um, the state currently is is at a fifteen percent positivity. Um, snapshot was from yesterday's data that was on the state website. You can also see that their cases are going up um on the graph, second um clip on that graph. From a county perspective, we're also seeing an increase um on their positivity rate. We were at eight point nine. About a little over a month ago, and we're, we've creeped up to twenty point four, uh primarily due to the subvariant that is um Ben. Um, probably in the news right now, that is a subvariant of the Omicron. Um, very that is being tracked by the county, and you can also see on the graph there that. The numbers also are increasing that you see a little after, as we approached a Fourth of July and a little after the numbers started to to creep back up. Our protocols and our PPE is still available and in stock, and all of those protocols remain consistent with nothing. There's no change to any of our city facilities and operations thereof. Our vaccination information, um it's updated. Keep in mind that the numbers now include everyone above five, five years of age. So vaccination percentage of fully vaccinated in Coachella is sixty-six point four, and those boosted is at twenty-six point nine. And the county is just under sixty percent, fully vaccinated and boosted at just under thirty percent. And with that, that does conclude my presentation. Thank you.
We'll move on now to uh consent calendar. It's recommended that the council consent items be after the pump time continuously unless separate action discussion. Is requested by the council. What are the wishes of the city council?
Uh, but before, I just wanna uh mention it. If there's a way we could uh uh sort of bring a effort to bring a monkey pox clinic to. A vaccination clinic for monkey pox and to to Coachella. I know we, I know that in last uh a week, we received news, there's been over a dozen cases in Riverside County alone now. And uh, and so it's, you know, uh pretty pretty serious. So we can bring some of those efforts out to. These which have our population, um and and so we could get vaccinated here and people don't have to drive other parts of the county. Uh, just uh wanted to plug that in before we move forward.
There is quite a bit of um increase in in um COVID testing, at least in our department. We're now expected to wear masks in the office because such a high increase of positive cases throughout the county with children services. So it's going up. This 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 variant is incredibly contagious, um aggressive, so. We have to be careful.
All right, we do have our consent uh calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
There's motions, there's a second.
One second.
There's a second, all those in favor, sing for me, say aye. We'll move on now to item number ten. This is adopt the annual budget for organizational structure for fiscal year. Twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three. Are there any questions in the budget? This is the third time we've heard the budget. Are there any questions? Is there any concerns? Is there a motion to approve the budget?
What's uh, what's the recommended budget after the uh the the employees? Did we change it?
The motion was to keep, to move forward on six hires.
Okay, correct. Good, all right.
Is there any?
We'll uh make a motion.
Is there a second? Can we get a roll call, please? Can we get a roll call, please?
Okay, uh, Councilperson.
Hi.
Uh, Councilmember Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Beben Jacinto.
Yeah.
I will move on now to item number eleven. This is resolution. Two thousand twenty-two dash eighty, American Rescue Plan ARPA State and Local Federal Recovery Funds. Uh, allocation agreement for Coachella UBI, Jacob. Thank you, Member, uh Mayor, and members of the city council. Can we please allow Jose Cuñones in as well as Catherine? Give me one sec. Robles Ayala. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and uh, go ahead and start. So as you may recall, Mission Asset Fund attended. And presented at our city council meeting held on April thirteenth of this year. At that meeting, they presented about Mission Asset Fund, the organization. And a potential implementation program where they would distribute cash payments to forgotten families who couldn't receive federally approved childcare tax credit. Today's item before you looks to you to approve staff recommendation, which includes resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighty. And one of two budget options. Jose Cuñones, the CEO and founder of MAF, and I will provide a brief presentation. Providing you an overview, a timeline and budget. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
Great, thank you very much, Jacob, for uh introducing the program, and it's always. You know, I'm very excited to come back to to the council to talk about this very important uh program. Uh, the Coachella UBI Recovery Program. Last time we spoke, I sort of was introducing the possibility of doing this. Work in 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 the city of Coachella, and I'm very happy that we were able to align. Uh, ourselves with the city to 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 actually make it, uh, make it happen, you know, in in a timely manner. If you can go to the next slide, just to kind of refresh the conversation a bit about what what the the program entails. Um, what we uh, what we have found was that during the COVID pandemic. That uh because undocumented immigrant families were excluded from receiving assistance from the federal government. That actually impacted people, you know, quite significantly in their financial health. Uh, we made a very conservative estimation about how many families uh were impacted in Coachella, and we estimated that about. You know, close to two thousand families were actually denied assistance, you know, during the federal government's effort trying to help people during the stimulus payments. Again, it's a very conservative estimate, but it is significant, however, you know, given, you know, the city of your size. I mean, and and this was actually really um uh impactful in terms of money. We estimated that a family of four was actually denied, you know, a little bit over eleven thousand dollars. And money not received from the federal government, you know, that actually in ended up costing the city. You know, over eighteen million dollars in money that did not come to the city. Now, this, of course, happened throughout the country, and so the impact, you know, to the immigrant community was quite significant. Uh, and and what ended up happening is that, you know, people uh you were impacted by uh by the 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 pandemic. By by losing jobs, losing hours, and people, you know, had to sacrifice, you know, their basic needs to the point that. Six in ten families were actually reported skipping meals or bills during the during the height of the pandemic. Uh, people were depleting their assets, meaning there were, they know, there were, they had to like um use up all their assets, all their savings. And so some even had to sell assets, you know, just to kind of stay afloat. And also during that time, people were incurring, you know, considerable debt, debt that they have not been able to repay even even to today. And so, so the impact of the pandemic, impact of being excluded, you know, has been quite significant. And so what we are doing uh at MAF is trying to, you know, provide one, some awareness of this issue. And also at the same time, trying to uh, you know, bring a program to bring significant support, you know, to immigrants across the country. Um, if you can go to the next slide. And what we're intended to do or propose to do with your support is to have a very specific Coachella UBI program. Uh, which is to say that we, uh, you know, we work with, you know, a hundred and forty or maybe two hundred families. And we will provide people with uh with four hundred dollars per month on an ongoing basis up to twenty-four months. And this will be an unrestricted gift uh of cash to that family. But more more importantly than that, because we know that cash is really important in people's lives. Uh, but even more important is also that engagement with them, providing people with financial coaching, advice. Uh, group workshops and even some advocacy training so that people can have the tools. To advocate for themselves and improve the financial, the financial lives throughout their lives. So that's something that we would, uh, you know, bring into the conversation. And 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 on in top of all of that, we would do some uh uh research, uh surveys, and then we would share learnings. From what we're hearing from your constituents, just to kind of basically uh show and demonstrate what what is actually working to help people recover. Recover faster. And so we're implementing this program at the national level already. Uh, we have over two thousand families already enrolled, and so we want to just do a very specific focused. A UBI uh recovery program in in the city of Coachella. Uh, in terms of the the program, you know, implementation, uh, you know, the the basic outline is this, is that we, you know, once, you know, with your support. You know, we will need about a two-month uh ramp up uh timeframe where we would uh make sure that we have all our documentation in order. You know, build a new website for you and then have everything uh ready for uh for getting uh um clients and 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 to start the enrollment process. Uh, we would, you know, have everything ready by October twelfth, or if not sooner. And so that that way we can, you know, have an official launch of the program, you know, by early October. And and then from this launch, we would have, you know, maybe a thirty-day uh open uh enrollment process where we would. Uh, invite people, you know, residents of the city of Coachella to apply, to complete the online application process. And then once, and then after that period is closed, we would analyze the 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 data, the applications. And 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 of course, we would expect a significant, you know, in bigger number than a hundred and forty or two hundred families per se. To apply, but but we would implement um uh what we call a financial equity framework. You know, to try to to try to decide on who to support. And this, you know, financial equity framework is really important, you know, because we're, you know, we wouldn't be approving applications. Based on a uh on a first come, first served basis, nor on a on a lottery system. Because we believe that those two approaches actually deepen inequalities, you know, in in communities. But instead, by by analyzing uh uh people's situation, we will, we would be able to sort of triage. From the, from the number of applications and really focus on families that need that, we need to help the most. Or where where our intervention can actually help them recover faster. And so that would, that would be uh through this uh of of financial equity framework. And so, so then then by uh by November of this year, and again, with your support, we can start the process of. Of supporting people with with four hundred dollars a month for up to two uh up to twenty-four months. Um, and I'll stop there, just if there's any any other questions or uh anything to clarify regarding the program. Or the implementation timeline.
Is this if for the presentation or or you still have more or something else just for questions as so far, Jose?
Well, this is just the 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 slides for the program. I think Jacob has a couple more slides related to budgeting. Uh, but I um I leave it up to you if you want to go deeper into the program more.
Jacob, why don't you cover those slides and then we dive into questions and and uh and answers and comments?
Fantastic. So here's the proposed budget. There's a option one and an option two. Um, and just for clarity, the top um row where it says four hundred monthly uh disbursements, there's option one for one point zero million. There's option two for one point four. So whatever money that council decides to approve tonight. Um, that entire amount will go to families in the four hundred dollar monthly disbursements. Um, depending on what option is chosen, uh, training, family support will be in the tune of one hundred and eighty-two thousand. Evaluation, one hundred and three, administration, one hundred and seven, with overall budget of one point four. Um, for option two, you could see the numbers that follow there, three hundred thousand for training and family support. Evaluation, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand and one hundred and eighty-five thousand. And those funds, as you could see on the bottom, are. Uh, from the support of community funders, um basically those um. Uh, bottom three are going to be covered by math. And then a question was brought up about in regards to our funding for the American Relief Act. Our ARPA funds, and there was some concern in regards to the fire station uh remodel budget. Uh, increasing due to the bids that we received. Uh, the city manager went ahead and looked at utility assistance and removing that since uh we had received state funds to be able to do that. In addition, the public facilities upgrades project at the bottom. So technically, we're still, I think, a little off, but. Um, what we're looking at right now, again, is the difference between the. The one million eight thousand dollars for option one or the one point four four uh for option two.
Right, but Jacob, uh, the option one is 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 still stays in line with with the go back with with that budget amount we have there.
Yeah, so we're, it's only two thousand dollars over.
Yeah, if if we choose to go with option two, then we need to look at further uh further cuts, but but for the purpose of 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 um. You know, of of this, it's it's the option one aligned with that, with with this cost.
That's correct.
That we had agreed to um or agreed, agreed or or had asked for um a few months ago.
That's correct.
Okay, good, good. I I'll just uh give, you know, some some uh uh comments and, you know, I want to thank our staff and. Uh, Mr. Quinones and and the staff at Mission Asset Fund, as well as our partners that lifted rise for. Uh, when this happened and we found out we're getting money from mayor, if from from the federal government for ARPA to support our residents. Uh, the mayor, yeah, Hernandez really approached the idea on how we can make sure that we can put some of this money back into the people. And uh, and so we did some 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 research, some venturing, and uh our friends that left rise were able to identify Mission Asset Fund. And so, you know, they, they're doing a great work already and it's, it's something that we can point to that's already existing in other areas in our state and our country. And they have a track record of even, uh, uh, of even, uh, um, supporting families in other ways. I was also impressed with their work even on ensuring that, for instance, we all grew up with our parents entering tandas in order to, you know, make ends meet or be able to support a quinceañera or whatnot. And, and I was so impressed the fact that Mission Asset Fund was able to find ways where they could get these tandas are a very informal way of, of borrowing and add them to a credit report to ensure that these people that are borrowing money and are paying it forward are now getting some, some, uh, uh, credit benefit from it, you know, they're getting a better great credit score for these, uh, the, these families that, you know, for a long time get denied credit cards. And just the history of Mission Asset Fund and what they've done, I was very impressed with the work they've done and they've been able to, to, to work together, though we see the total was around, I think for, for option one, it, it showed over one point four million dollars, but it would only be a cost of one million dollars for us in the city. Uh, what, although the good thing that we, we really enjoyed about Mission Asset Fund, the fact that they were going to do the financial coaching, the education part and the administration free of costs to the city. So every single dollar that we spend as a, as a city from ARPA, uh, is going to go to the people. And so a lot of times when, when these projects happen, people get sort of raising arms and how much money is it going to go truly to the people versus administrative costs? And the fact that they're able to do this without spending the money that we're putting in i- is, is, is also very impressive. And so for that, I, you know, was really, um, moved and, and wanted to really push this through to ensure that our, our, our residents that were denied these, uh, federal and state, uh, of, of COVID relief money, uh, that now as, as, as their, uh, uh, community, uh, representatives in this council, uh, we owe them, you know, uh, uh, this, you know, and, and, and being able to obviously build off of this, but, uh, and seeing how we can work further and the idea of universal basic income, I think, can be controversial to some people, but we could look at studies, for instance, what happened at the city of, of Stockton. And there are reports that it actually, the, their UBI, uh, project was, actually showed that there was a lot of uh, positive impact in the, in the residents that were receiving these UBI funds. Uh, and, and I think that us here bringing it to Coachella, not only looking at, at, at the fact that there were decline, but we're also looking at the economic status. There, there's going to be a, 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 an economic, um, uh, need, right? Where we're looking at, and that's very important because we can't simply hand out, you know, UBI without prioritizing need uh, in, 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 in communities. It's very important that when we do this as city council people, that we don't just say we're going to get this group of people and not look at their socioeconomic well-being. It's very important that we prioritize that, um, uh, if, uh, first and foremost, so. Thanks so much. Uh, those are my comments. And obviously when we're all ready, I'm more than happy to, to make the motion, but I'll let my, my colleagues, uh, make comments or questions.
Um, Jacob or Gabriel, when we, when we had the study session, was there a matching fun portion of it? I thought there was a matching fun portion of it back then.
Uh, I'm not aware of that.
So the, the matching fun, the matching, I think, was the, the, um, no, let Mr. Quinones, uh, uh, a, answer more, but the matching was there. At first you saw some numbers, the numbers for the coaching and for the administrative costs were sort of inflated a bit. I think they were at, the last time they showed it to us, it was around eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
And that was, was, that's what we assumed was matching where, you know, we come up with a million dollars and then they're going to pay for it, you know, the administrative costs and the, and the financial, uh, educational portion. Uh, but, you know, after meetings and conversations, uh, you know, the, the clarification was that actually that, those numbers, you know, in that, in actuality, they're just there, but they, they're, they're not going to cost the city anything. And that's sort of where the in-kind matching is coming from Mission Asset Fund. But Mr. Quinones, I'll, I'll let you clarify i- any further detail regarding that point.
Well, I, I, I think you did a great job. Thank you for that. Uh, yes, definitely. We are coming in with in-kind matching. We're not charging anything to do this work. But I think there's also a possibility of actually leveraging this program, uh, with state money. Now, there is, uh, there is a program that we're looking into applying. Hopefully we can do it together. Or you, we can actually get this, your million dollars and actually leverage it, you know, with state money to, to, to increase the amount. But, but we have to have the program so that we can apply. Uh, but, but, but our, our commitment has always been that we want to do this with you because we have our funding covered, you know, through our grant from the McKenzie Scott, uh, last year. So we are able to make this happen, you know, at no cost to the city. Now, we want to do this because we want to do this program in a really local, you know, in a very strong community base. And also bring all the other programs that, that we have available, including lending circles, immigration loans, business loans and other things that, that might be important to, uh, to your constituents. So it's not going to be just a one, one-off program, right? It's going to be like, uh, here's a suite of the different products and services that we have for people to actually, you know, uh, uh, avail themselves, you know, as they needed. So, so that's, so that there's a potential for leveraging state money. You know, and by you're leveraging our resources to make this program happen, you know, in your community.
Thank you, Jose, for that clarification. Also is one, once we reach the one hundred and forty applicants, because I'm, you know, I think we can all agree that we're going to have a lot more than a hundred and forty applicants. What was the number that you, the estimate for, um, for the population down here that was eligible?
Well, no, so we made an estimate of the people that were denied assistance and it was like one thousand eight hundred, closer to two thousand families. Again, very conservative estimate. I think there might be more.
I agree.
So that's like the, the, the need, you know, and yeah, that was the number.
So, so when we put this out, right, that we can only provide for a hundred and forty?
Yeah.
Um, applicants. And then so what is the process of choosing, you know,
Yes.
to have the two-year assistance and then who doesn't make it through? And then also is what happens with those families that don't get accepted?
Right. Yeah, no, so this is what we did last, uh, during the COVID pandemic where we, we, we did emergency grants. We ultimately received more than two hundred and eighty thousand applications from people all over the country. And we were able to sort of fund, uh, about sixty-five thousand grants. And so as you can imagine, you know, just kind of being overwhelmed with a number of applications that came from people all over the country. We were able to then, you know, kind of create this triage process that I called a financial equity framework, where we were able to sort of analyze the applications, not on a first come, first served basis or nor on a lottery basis, but really, uh, analyze, you know, the, the situation that the people were in. And so we were able to sort of, you know, uh, document or, you know, with, through that framework, uh, about who could benefit the most from that one-time engagement. So we want to do the same thing with this program, which is to say like through the application, we'll be able to sort of say, here's us, you know, families with kids, people that are low income, people that haven't, you know, they didn't get the, the COVID, uh, you know, stimulus payments or even were denied the child tax, the child tax credit, for example. And then in, in even trying to figure out, well, what is the current, you know, uh, economic situation? So that that way we can, you know, use the, your, your resources, you know, in a most effective manner. So again, it's not just about throwing money at the, you know, at the window, right? You know, uh, but it's about like, well, how can we analyze from, you know, from the applications and analyze, you know, the families that would need, that, that could use the money the most? That's one thing. And the second thing is to say that we don't want to say no to everybody else. We can say, look, we also have other programs, lending circles. Here's our financial education curriculum that, that we have. Here's our online app that we have or other, other loans that people may need, so that that way we can give people other options of engagement with MAF as well.
So you do have a, a list of resources or other programs that you can then redirect the, you know, um, you know, say fifteen hundred. I'm thinking more, you know, I agree with you. I think it's much higher than two thousand.
Yeah.
And, and you know, we're going to really find out is when this goes out. And then we get those applications and we're really going to start to really become aware of, of how many, um, might be eligible. And so you have a, a list of resources and programs, you know, whether it be at the state level, whether it be at the county level or the federal level to then redirect some of these applicants.
Yeah, that, that is our intention, you know, you, we can add other even city-related resources as well. You know, so it's not about denying people, right? But it's about like, okay, the ones they show themselves, then we can, how can we help them the most? You know, but also rec, you know, recognizing that there are limited resources in terms of the, uh, uh, of the UBI program. Uh, you know, that we can only do as, 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 as much money that we have available. You know, which is why, you know, trying to leverage this money with state funding is going to be really critical as well. That once we have, we, we've identified those individuals, if more money becomes available, then we can easily, you know, uh, include them into the program as well in the future. So, so it's not a denial, but it'll be like, here's some referral information. Here's how we can, you know, we can help them in different ways, but, um, but initially we would have to start with what we have, which is, if it, we, if we go to with a million dollars, that could only help, uh, support a hundred and forty families.
Thank you, Jose. And then my last question, and I know I asked it last time as well. And when you were rolling out these programs throughout the country, is that some of them were on the one year and then some of them were on the two-year, um, assistance program?
That's right.
Um, and so my question again is, you know, do you think it's most beneficial to do a two-year and have a hundred and forty and two hundred and eighty for one year?
Or we can do eighteen months, you know, so, you know, I think we can, you know, if you allow for some, uh, wiggle room, so that, well, we can discuss that with, you know, with the mayor and, 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 and staff to figure out how, what would be the best configuration of that, you know, for your city. Cause right now you're right, at the national level, we do have two cohorts, one that is for twelve months, another one for twenty-four months. We can do that or we can say, hey, let's just do everybody for eighteen months or something of that sort, so that that way we can, you know, have just one program. But again, we can, you know, there's, there's still time within the two, two month period to fine tune it to the, to, to how it can work in your city the best.
Thank you. And then just, you know, I just want to reiterate that to, to my colleagues is that if we're going to move forward with this, that we try to, you know, include as many, um, families as possible. You know, because I know that there's going to be a lot of families who are going to be upset, you know, or, or hurt that they're not, you know, a part of the hundred and forty families. And so that's my, that's my concern. Thank you, Jose, for all your explanations and.
Yeah.
Mr. Quinones, in this option, uh, we discussed them last time we met about possibly doing, uh, you know, since it's a pilot program, possibly doing seventy families in the one-year track and doing, uh, the other seventy families on a two-year track. That we further study, uh, the results after, you know, putting together data like what, what was benefit, like what was the most impactful in terms of, uh, of economic recovery and economic relief? Um, so can, can, that, that's an option two, right, that we're looking at?
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's how we have it, you know, at the national level right now, because what we're trying to, you know, to demonstrate, uh, is like, is, what is it going to take to help people recover economically? And how are they going to recover faster? Is it just money? And it's a question about m- money for a longer period of time. So that way we're going to be able to sort of measure, you know, the financial progress that people are doing, you know, in a twelve-month cohort or twenty-four-month cohort, you know, but what we know for sure is that money is important. You know, particularly this families that we're talking about, you know, any money, you know, can, is going to be a great help. You know, but, but it's going to be that, that coaching, that engagement, the self-advocacy and even the things that they're doing themselves, that is going to help them, you know, move, move along faster. So, so we could do that, you know, or we could just do everybody at eighteen months as well. So I mean, again, you know, there's still, you know, some, some time to fine tune it, you know, in, in whatever which way it's going to work out best for you. You know, but the, the idea that some people are going to get upset for not, and you know, not being involved. And I think this is where, you know, some people kind of go the route by, you know, doing a lottery, you know, system. And, and, and in my mind, frankly, again, that, that approach really just deepens, you know, um, in, inequality even more so. You know, but through the financial equity framework, we're going to be able to sort of, you know, uh, fine tune it so that we can help the people that are, that are going to need the help the most, uh, but not deny people help. You know, because we're going to be able to sort of provide other additional helps to other, other families as well. But, but you know, but there's only so much resource that people will be, I think, understanding of that.
Right.
I have a, a question, Mr. Quinones. Um, the need is great in our community.
Yeah.
So clearly we're going to have, we're not going to meet the need. Um, my question, we're not going to meet the need with just this program because there's just not enough slots. Um, my question is, I, I really want to, I, I want to hope and, 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 and trust that the most needy is are going to be, um, the ones that, that in, end up getting the services. Um, how, and you probably discussed this in the past and I'm not recalling, but I want to ensure, um, my question is, are you going to have boots on the ground here looking for the most needy? Because a lot of our, um, residents may not have access to the computer or not knowledgeable on how to utilize the computer to apply online. Um, and most people are not going to come forward because they're afraid. Um, and it's going to require some interfacing engagement in order to, um, trust us so, um, they can apply. Um, and that's been my experience in interfacing with my community is the most needy, um, usually don't come forward and they need to, we need to seek them out. Um, so I heard you earlier saying something about applying, um, online. And my worry is that if that's the only avenue, um, that we may be missing some of the most needy.
Mm-hmm. I completely agree with your assessment and we've, you know, experienced that even when we were giving people emergency grants that, that, you know, to get to the folks that needed it the most, they weren't, they weren't the ones that were applying quickly. Then that's what we don't do first come, first served. You know, there were a lot of relief efforts that were built on this idea that whoever submits application first, they're the ones that get it, right? Boy, they're, they're the ones that, that maybe not, yeah, then, yeah. And so, so this is where our work in partnership with you is going to be really critical, right? Because you know your community the best, you are the leader, you are the expert. So we're going to have to like rely and lean on your expertise and your leadership. And as well, our, our partners like Lift to Rise and others, you know, in your community to help us get the word out. You know, but, but the, the, the online application is the only way we can do this at this level. You know, and, and, uh, and then it is, it is a, a barrier. But I think it is a barrier that can, is, can be overcome with some, uh, conversation and, and, and leadership. But I think again, we're going to be relying on, on you to help, you know, get the word out on press. And know that, you know, there, there's a lot of press that are interested in this issue and this particular program. So that, so that's how we can get the word out about, about this work. And then once, you know, we have the applications in, we'll be able to sort of analyze them again. You know, we're going to be able to sort of triage from all applications to make sure that we're focusing on the people that need it the most. Now, this is not a, you know, so that, that is really the all that we can do with the online application. But I, but I don't, I, I, I hope is not going to be that bigger of a barrier. Cause I think in the past, we demonstrated that with a little bit of effort, you know, people will, you know, submit the application online.
Okay, so we have to come up with the, some help to the city so that not only the education, but, um, helping in applying. Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I do, I just, um, have a comment and I've, I've said this in the past each time that we've discussed this program and I just want to reiterate it. Um, you know, everyone recognizes that this will, this program, though very important, uh, will have a big impact on a limited number of families. Um, and I think it's critically important that we, um, conduct or that, that you conduct the, the type of learning and evaluation that will allow us to assess the possibility of broadening or scaling up the program in the future, um, for broader populations and for, uh, greater impact in our community. So I know you have that all set up there. Um, there's a big learning and evaluation piece to this puzzle. But we as a council and as a leadership and staff of the city really need to pay a lot of attention to that so that we can plan on a longer term, um, uh, in a longer-term way for how we can take this program as a pilot, as an example, and communicate it to the community in that way, uh, to soften some of the feelings of being left out and, and then scale it up to make a, a greater impact for our community.
If, if I can add a response to that, I, I, I think you hit, um, you're hitting a really important point, which is, is the evaluation and the learning, right? Because my hope, and I'll be honest with you, is like, my hope is what we learn from how to implement this program can actually impact other programs. You know, other programs, you know, that are provided at the city level, at the county level, at the state level, about how to actually engage with, you know, people that are always left behind. And so I want to elevate those learnings, not just about the program itself, but about like the manner, you know, the way that we can. You know, the way that we can work with people from a position of respect, you know, in, in, with dignity and elevating them in that way. That can actually, you know, lead to, you know, much better outcomes for their lives and, in, in the lives of, of the community. And so I think there's, there's definitely a potential for ripple effects, you know, from the program itself, but you're absolutely correct. This is a pilot. You know, this is a, you know, one intervention, and then, and if we can demonstrate that it can work, then, and I can, I can, I'm, I'm sure there's gonna, you know. Impact the way other programs are developed as well.
Yeah, I um, I'm reassured by the fact that this is a pilot and it's a pilot that ultimately will, I think, vibrate. In terms of the results that we see in the state as well as in the nation. And this is also a program that's, that's really focused in on our immigrant population that we really know didn't. Weren't the beneficiaries, any of the financial assistance during the, the last few years, and we know that they're hurting, we know that they're also. Very integral and, and critical to our economy and to our community, and so. Uh, our ability to help them is, is something that I, I think we, we can do and we're gonna do. Um, I will say as well to those that are perhaps non-immigrants and home citizens. That we are looking to join uh a state effort as well uh in order to leverage more dollars. And then show them the framework that we have here established where it's not just, here's some money, but, you know, it's, it's, it's also, you know, thirty. Uh, different financial sessions, it's also, you know, coaching and, and a lot of different things that are gonna occur. And I think that, that the framework we're putting together here is, is one that's different than what's been traditionally. Uh, being offered with respect to this program. Is it um? Is it, is it, is it something that local government typically gets into? No, this is new, this is, this is innovative, this is being bold. Um, and yet at the same time, you know, it's, it's trying to meet a need, uh, because we know that society is changing. You know, there's been more, more robots, there's, there's, you know, more uh just machines that are doing people's work. We, we know that. You know, you look at global warming and, and things that are occurring, people are working less hours in the fields. And that's uh, it, it's something that I think as a, as a whole, we're gonna have to really. Just pay attention to and, and really be innovative as local governments to ensure that our communities. Uh, can still subsist and thrive uh as, as the economy changes. So I, I, I feel good about where we're at. I, I would like um to stick to what we originally budgeted, which is a million. And then understanding that our goal is to leverage this money uh with the state. And maybe bring a few more million home and then even brought, brought in the program. But we gotta start somewhere and we'll say, and math, everybody over there, thank you, and as well as uh lift to rise and. You know, I, I, I will say that I. I wanna know more and learn more, and I think the council as well should uh um really educate themselves on what is the. Financial equity framework. And, and what does that, that mean? Because it could easily be misconstrued that we're picking favorites and it shouldn't be. Uh, we're really looking at, at this as, you know, we wanna know your income, we wanna know who is the most vulnerable. And then even if you're low income and you're vulnerable, but maybe not the most, there's gonna be services for you and other programs for you. And so we could, you know, maybe, uh, maybe get a memo typed, and then we can learn more about the. Uh, financial equity framework so that we too are educated and we can be of assistance as this program gets rolled out.
And, uh, you know, to, I just wanna comment on some of the points too, you know, um, Stockton, which is a sort of more popular city that did this, I mentioned earlier. Their population is a three hundred thou- three hundred thousand residents, way, you know, way bigger than us. And, and they only did a hundred and twenty-five people. We're doing a hundred and forty people for a pop, for, for a city that's. Of a, of, of, of less than fifty thousand residents that were counted by census, we were maybe a little more, but um. Uh, and, and we're doing a hundred and forty families to, to, to launch this pilot program in our city. And so I, you know, I, I think to speak in, in that level, you know, we're doing a hundred and forty families to a population of, of less than fifty thousand, where you have Stockton do. Hundred and twenty-five families for a population of three hundred thousand, and we're using this ARPU money, uh, uh, Stockton also didn't use their general money, they actually had private donors. Um, where they did it, but another point, you know, to, to, that way our team can work with math, maybe we could use a different name, the Coachella UBI program. Um, you know, uh, Stockton's team had a, they had, it's called CED, it's Stockton Economic Empowerment Demonstrate, Demonstration. It's pretty cool, this is not a nice little marketing, so I think we could look, because universal basic income means literally universal basic income, that means everyone gets money. And, and when I, when I'm doing a UBI program here in the city, it's, it's very uh targeted to, uh, you know, a, a, a turning population. Uh, that's of need, and so I think maybe our team and, uh, can work with them on, on a different branding name when we roll it out. Um, you know, that way it's sort of like, you know, it, it, it talks to that, because we don't wanna give, again, this is mis- 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 misinterpretation that this is a. A UBI, you know, and you talk about UBI, you talk about every single person within the city getting X amount of money, and that, that's not what we're doing here, it's very much. Very calculated, very, you know, intentional. Um, obviously, in, 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 in a, in a, in another world, it had, had President Yang. Been a thing, then maybe we'd have UBI now, but we don't. Um, and so, uh, we, uh, we, we, you know, not, not. That was an endorsement of his campaign. But it is just, you know, I mentioned him because he proposed it at a national level, and so. Yeah, you know, we're, we're here now and we get a chance to resupport these a hundred and forty families. Um, and, 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 and see how we can further grow, if we get leverage some state money and those, well, private, you know, uh, corporations within the city. Or outside that are interested in supporting, if before October you reach out to us and you find some hundred thousand dollars laying around that you wanna support. The community, then we can increase the number of families that we support by then. This is saying we're supporting a hundred and forty families. Obviously, there's still room where we could get more families o- on board, and uh, we could further meet in the. A follow-up meeting about whether we do seventy-seventy or, you know, the, how, how that works, but, you know, for now, you know, obviously, we're looking at. The budget that we had agreed on, uh, was a million dollars and, 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 uh, and, and see how we could support families that, that way. Um, I'd like to uh make a motion to support uh this uh, uh, for now, it's a quote Coachella UBI, but we'll, we'll work on, on a different name.
A second.
I, I would just add that, uh. There is, and while you compared us to, you know, Stockton, this program is very much different.
Yeah.
And, and we need to. We all need to say that it's different. Stockton gave people money and didn't give them any resources to actually have trained them. And, and follow up on, 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 you know, just financial literacy, we intend. And part of the commitment here is that if you're participating in this program, that you are gonna be coming to. Uh, the different, uh, you know, workshops and, and seminars that we're gonna be having. If not, you're done. And so for us, it's really, it's really about creating, you know, lasting change. And it's about coaching people and teaching people and really kind of trying to create a, a, uh. A, a new world for immigrants who, who are freshly arriving. So, yeah, I think there, we, we need to just differentiate ourselves from that.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's, this, this program's not that. So there is a motion and a second. Um, I'll call for the role.
Councilman Riquelosa.
I.
Councilman Delgado.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Pro Tim Gonzalez.
I.
And Mayor Hennabis.
I. Move forward now on resolution two thousand twenty-two dash eighty-one, approving the agreement of exchange of real property and joint escrow instructions between the City of Coachella. And the Imperial Irrigation District to convey fee title of approximately three point three acres of electric substation located on. Avenue fifty-two and convey thirty-foot public utility right-of-way on a bu- a budding parcel seven. Six-three, one thirty-one, zero, zero, one, in exchange for approximately one point seven-three acres of vacant land located. On the southwest corner of Ninth Street and Shade. Uh, Gabriel.
Carlos, uh, the, the, yeah, the staff report.
Yeah, yeah, uh, council before you, it's a resolution approving the agreement to send to transfer to one city property. Uh, which is three point three seven acres, currently used for ID substation Avenue fifty-two, as well as thirty-foot Eastman, adjacent to that. Most ever were documents that, uh, in consideration, uh, an exchange for a property on Ninth Street that's shady, near downtown area that's currently owned. Um, but I, this was an idea that came from the city, we've been working on this for a while, due to the fact that these. The, the, the harsh city parcels were uh previously owned by successor agency, and so we've had to clear up some of the initial transfers. And go to the Oversight Board um for approval as well. We still haven't uh trapped, been, we're still in the process of transferring. Title to the city on the thirty-foot Eastman, however, um, we wanna bring this item for you that we can get direction to go ahead and finalize, you agree with the escrow instructions. What we're able to do so, not that, but we're able to convey those properties, tie IDs, in exchange for the property here on Ninth Street. Which can, which will have, can have multiple uses here in the city, connect here in downtown.
Carlos has the IID voted on this already?
No, we sent that over to them. Uh, I'm not sure when, when they've scheduled it. That's why we just, we wanted to sort of bring this to the council, that we could speed up the process and that's it before I.
Do we have um agreement with them? Okay.
We do, yeah. And, and what happened initially, we, we initially brought this to the council for approval, might have been a year or two ago, but then. Um, title, once title, once title became involved and reviewed that these were successor agencies, we had to come back and clean up. Some of those title issues, and that's why it's taking so long.
So this is something that, um, we've been working on for a minute, understanding that the fifty-two parcel. Uh, is successor agency property or was successor agency property, and as such had to be deemed for government use, so. Because there is a substation on there, um, it would have to go to the Imperial Irrigation District for government use. Well, in exchange, what we said is, you know, if we're gonna give you something, we'll take something. And the idea is that, you know, we get one point seven-three acres in exchange, which is down the street here on Ninth Street, it's, it's the. It's the vacant parcel that is in front of the big substation that looks like a, a diamond plate. And if you look at that parcel, it really is the missing link between. The downtown development and the improvements that have been occurring here and the other improvements that have occurred. Uh, at Briggs, at Dateline, uh, Avenue fifty-two, and then the new bikeways, et cetera, so the idea is to finish out. That essentially park node system that we have, and then create a nice little, let it call it a nice, another, another little nice pocket park. Uh, that would essentially be for uh an active community use, the, the, the parcel on Avenue fifty-three. Or I'm sorry, and Avenue fifty-two, it's not accessible to the public, uh, and it's, it's got a substation on it, so in return. We get a nice little park, and so I, I, I think what it does is really kind of, if you think of this corridor. Um, you know, we've been working for years now on Avenue fifty-two, you have the park with the bear. Which is Shady Lane Park, and it's also a fruit garden. Uh, then you go down and you have this beautiful mural that has. Nice little sidewalk, but then you have Briggs Park or Dateline Park, as most people know, I know it's Briggs. But, but uh, it, it's a, it, that's been remodeled, as you come in, there, there is a gap there that's. It's kind of gray, it's, it's very industrial looking, and that's where this park is located. But if you come in here, you have. You have the library park, you have the veterans' park.
Mm-hmm.
And then you literally have, you move down the street here and you have Ethereal Park, so within like one, one mile, you have five, six little parks. And it creates a little walkable community node, and what we do in, on this Ninth Street part. I, I would imagine that, you know, community is gonna get to input, get some input, but I, this is my, I, I idea. And I've been throwing this out. When we build, when we remodel veterans' park, because people don't remember, remember, um, there used to be a big. Uh, community pool, and I'm not saying that, that we should have a community pool on that Ninth Street part. But we should have a massive fountain where people, a huge splash area where people can get wet. And we do not have that anymore in downtown, so I throw that idea out because it'd be kind of cool to get a, a, a. I don't know if you guys have ever seen, uh, uh, the Mohallen Park in LA. They created this huge fountain, or if you look at like the front of Cathedral City Hall, they have a huge like water feature. Where kids and folks play, and they have a really good time and it's an attraction, so I just throw that idea out there, it's an idea, but I'm sure the community can. Chime in on what they wanna see there in the future, but, but that is the idea, and that, that's why we propose to, to make this exchange with the IID.
Washington approve.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I just wanna, you know, I, I think it's a, you know, pod staff, the mayor for, is that for, I think, we could throw in Tom, I D. They could throw in that, that building on Ninth and Great, that, 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 you know, they're not even using it. Uh, it's a story, we can make a little museum out of that, they're not even using it, we, we'll take it off their arms, we'll make it into. You know, we have Chicano murals all across there.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, and, and if, and it, you know, let's ask them if they could give it, you know, we could take it off their arms, they don't have liability over that. You know, we'll take care of it, we'll make it nice, it'll be, you know, economic development for the city. Uh, it's right next to this too. And I think, you know, I think this, it's a win-win for them, you know, they, they still, they're still winning, but I, I just wanted to mention that because I, you know, I see that and. Looks like a historic building, has, you know, very nice structure and, and it, and it's unfortunately, it's closed, nobody's done anything with it and. And we would take it and we can make something nice, maybe an extension of the teach, or, you know, it's just some, just some thoughts, or we could sort of grab that. That unused facility, uh, why not? But, um, is, is that, is that a possibility that we could request?
Well, we shouldn't amend this right now.
Yeah, but, but I'm asking, I'm asking the city, I'm, I'm, I'm asking the city.
Yeah, we definitely can reach out to ID and have those discussions.
Yeah, let's get this done, and then we'll work on it.
Carlos, um, when will this be going before the IID board?
We said it over, I don't think we have a date yet, but, uh, we wanted to speed it up as well, like I said, we're, we're finally figuring out how to trust this, this. We have the main parcel, the thirty-foot right-of-way, we're either gonna buy a straight or maybe go to the oversight point, we're trying to figure that out, but in the meantime. Uh, we wanted to take this to the council and also have ID to, to speed up the process.
And, and if, just as an FYI to, the city has already started improving that little diamond through our. Uh, grant that we got, uh, uh, for the, uh, Grapefruit Boulevard, so it's already started being lined with, with, uh, trees and sidewalks. And the next phase would be to really kind of think of, of how to build it out and, and do some underground innocent utilities, so. I, 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 ultimately, I think it's gonna be good.
So.
The council, now, once we get a date, I'll, I'll email the council.
And there's nothing, it would disable my request as well, you know, doesn't hurt that.
And then, um, Gabriel, what would be, once it goes with IID board and we iron out all the details, um, and then will you be holding some community events?
Yeah, we'll definitely start an outreach effort to get the buy-in on design and definitely, you know, we, we try to do that with our new projects. Uh, a lot of grants ask for that, so I think it's a good, uh, uh, tactic to use moving forward.
Someone make it known, if we don't, if we don't revamp Tallawak Park, I'm not gonna be supporting, uh, this until we do something about Tallawak Park. Uh, but, uh, for now, obviously, let's get the land.
They planted two new trees.
Not a Tallawak Park, not a Tallawak Park.
All right.
Um, but we'll, we'll, we'll get it there for now, I, I second that there's a motion.
There's a motion, there's a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilman Riquelosa.
I.
Councilman Delgado.
Yes.
Councilman Vime Jacinto.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Gonzalez.
I.
And Mayor Hennabis.
I, I will move on now to public hearing items, this is Community Facilities District CFD number two thousand zero-five dash zero-one, annexation thirty-four. Via there's this apartment, um, gonna go ahead and call or open a public hearing, this is a public hearing item. My Community Facilities District number two thousand and five dash zero-one, annexation thirty-four. Um, this is. This has been, was continued from, uh, the meeting of July thirteenth, so I'm reopening the public hearing, that's your seat, attorney.
Thank you, as you know, we, we had to continue this item, the ballots had, we didn't receive them timed for the last public hearing, such, we continued it today again. For. And, and actually, maybe for, uh, I tally. Yes, I see if any of that's in the audience.
Is there anyone on the audience that would like to speak on this item? Again, this is a resolution two thousand twenty-two dash. I'm sorry, this is Community Facilities District CFD two thousand five dash zero-one, annexation thirty-four. The other, the apartments, is there anyone that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at seven sixteen. I'm gonna ask that person, attorney, go ahead and open. The ballots for the record. I'm going to ask that person, attorney, go ahead and open the ballots for the record.
That is provided by the housing authority of the county of Riverside. And it's a yes in support of the annexation. As such, yes, and we'll have majority protest council to proceed with this item.
Okay, well, we have a, we have a ballot where it was in favor to annex into our community facilities districts. What is the issue to the city council? Is that a motion included adopt resolution twenty-two dash sixty-nine, adopt resolution twenty-two dash seventy, adopt resolution two thousand twenty-two dash seventy-one and introduce, introduce ordinance number eleven ninety-seven on behalf of C F D two thousand and five. Is that your motion?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. There's a motion in a second. And this is with waiver of the ordinance and the readings.
Now, we, the orders now into record for the city council in Coachella. I can then as legislative body, the city Coachella Community Facilities District number two thousand five dash one. Offering led special tax within annexation area number thirty-four and next to said district. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Calapsa.
I.
Councilman Delgado.
Yes.
Councilman Beben Jacinto.
Yeah.
Mayor Potem Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mayor Hernandez.
I. We'll move on now to adoption resolution twenty-two dash seventy-four. Approving the fourth amendment to the Integrated Solid Waste Management Services between Vertec Waste and Recycling Services LLC and the city of Coachella and adopting rates for solid waste collections.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, we did set the public hearing for this item in June and we went through our Prop two eighteen noticing process, which was completed. Um, and today's public hearing for this item, we've been before the council a few times this year with regards to S B thirteen eighty-three. This is a continuation. This would be the last step correspondent to, um, being compliant with what's required of us now by the state due to the new bill. Um, just a quick overview, excuse me, of our current contract, the current term of our contract with our, with our waste hauler, Bertec Services is, it turns out in May of twenty twenty-three. Currently, it provides for all of these listed services, which includes bulky item pickup, up to four items for residential services on a weekly basis and also e-waste pickup, Christmas tree collection, used motor oil and filter recycling for residential service customers, street sweeping twice per month, a franchise fee that's collected and returned to the city of twelve percent. City sponsored events that include porta, porta, portlets at our, our events and the cardboard trash cans and also trash service. Rolloffs for our events, community cleanups, um, up to five a year and tread events. Annual educational brochure that gets mailed out to our, all of our customers as well as, um, the collaboration that is ongoing throughout the year with the field representative and recycling coordinator um, with the city staff as well as with all of our customers. Administrative fee that's provided to the city of twenty thousand and assistance in providing and submitting the electronic annual report to carry cycle and the written report that's provided and is part of the second, the next item that is then submitted, um, to the county for collection of residential, um, service fees on the tax roll. In summary, thirteen eighty-three has required agencies to, um, to provide organic collection to all of its customers, right? Both residential and commercial. The agreement and the amendment before the council this evening will add that service and that collection to those of both customer bases, both residential and, both residential and commercial. It includes holler programs. It includes, um, language that speaks to minimizing contamination and waste in, uh, waste inspection as required by the state, um, up twice a year. Waivers, we've identified that about half of our commercial customers are eligible for the waiver and with Bertec, we have been doing site visits to those customers and identifying who can be waived from having to have organics bin as well, so that that fee is not a requirement for those businesses. Um, we have spoken with our businesses, acquired the information as required by the state and forwarded to the county with regards to edible food recovery and capacity. The council has already adopted a resolution that identifies and speaks to, um, our procurement requirements and establishing internal policies that help us meet those benchmarks set, set by the state as well as the holler agreement. Um, also provides for recurring the amount that's required of the city, uh, to meet that benchmark if we need assistance in doing so. And inspection is also spoken to in the holler agreement that will be a collaborative initially, um, done by the holler. And then if there are recurring issues, then it would be a collaboration with the city and the holler as we need to approach individual customers for that. To obtain compliance. With regards to, um, the outreach, I'm going to I'm going to have one more slide and then I'm going to turn over the presentation to, uh, Vertex Municipal Manager Clara Vera, who's going to go over more of the outreach components. Uh, that is very important to our rollout of the S B thirteen eighty-three programs that are identified here. The, the holler agreement before the amendment before the council would extend the term, as I mentioned originally, currently is twenty twenty-three and it would extend it to twenty thirty-five. Um, it will include, as noted, the organics program, welcome organics kit for our residential customers. Contamination monitoring, as I mentioned, and labeling for all of the new and existing containers and also rollout of new containers as the state has identified a change in the coloring of our, our bins. So they will go from currently it's brown and gray and green to sorry, gray, green and blue, blue being the change that goes to recycling. Um, with that, um, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Bear that's going to go through some of the outreach components that will be proceeding and, and have already started.
Just a tad there. Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor. Um, Mayor Potem, distinguished members of the council and staff and, uh, the community. Thank you for letting us be here today with you. It is an absolute pleasure. And, uh, without further ado, I'll zip through these slides and give you a brief overview of the education and outreach. As Maritza has mentioned, um, there is a new state legislation. It's one of its kind in the state of California. It's one of the most aggressive legislations in the state of California um, in the last thirty years. And with that said, it is our pleasure to provide these services to you and for you to consider us as your partner in achieving those goals. As Maritza mentioned, you may have seen around your neighborhood, these pretty new blues and some of the, uh, burgundies or browns or Bordeaux uh, carts be taken away. Uh, rest assured that with those, we are providing outreach that lets the residents know of that change. So when you're getting your burgundy taken away and you're receiving your new gray, it is now your new trash and your blue is now your new recycling. And we are providing as required by the state law, and it's the right thing to do to provide those items in both English and in Spanish, as you can see in all of the pieces that I will showcase for you today. Uh, city of Coachella, Bertec and outreach, we thought it would be really, um, important to share with you some of the progress that, that we've made. As Maritza has mentioned, it's been a pleasure to work with Maritza and staff and, um, our staff to ensure that everybody's getting the messaging, that everybody's getting that outreach and not only English, but also in Spanish. Uh, we've been providing built insert messages for both residential and commercial as required by S B thirteen eighty-three. Uh, we are currently monitoring a lot of regulations that are still in play that fall under S B thirteen eighty-three, which is A B three forty-one, A B eighteen twenty-six and A B eight two seven, which all fall under the mandatory compliance of S B thirteen eighty-three. We are doing, as Maritza has mentioned, a lot of great work in the community. To make sure that we are placing the right programs with the right businesses and making sure that everybody's right size and that we take advantage of those waiver programs for those businesses that just do not meet the food, um, waste requirements of that. Um, with that said, we provide free waste assessments, free collateral, free posters and labels to all of those businesses. Um, we've also just completed our edible food recovery planning, which is required by the state of California that states all of our tier one, tier two. So all of our big, big businesses in the city of Coachella are required, uh, which most of them are already doing, um, taking food that would be thrown away usually to, to our landfills and take those edible foods and to provide them to wonderful agencies that we have here in the city and our local partners as well. A waiver program that has been outstanding work. We just, um, finished wrapping up a lot of our program with that. Uh, thanks to the Bertec team and to the businesses who welcomed us to have that conversation. A lot of times those conversations can be a little tricky and, um, overwhelming for businesses. And, uh, we truly, uh, visit those businesses with that intent to ensure that they understand that there are several programs available for them and that our intent is to make sure that they're compliant and they're also having the right programs in place. And with that said, uh, we just officially, um, sent our last ones, which takes us to about a hundred and sixty businesses that we know just are not producing that level of food as required by S B thirteen eighty-three and they have been officially waived and approved by the city. So with that said, um, I applaud your efforts in your approach to your recycling campaign, which we met, I think, last month on. It's an outstanding effort by the city of Coachella to produce that level of relationship with your local community businesses who are required to have that program in place and who need the assistance. So again, it's the best way to approach to not only gain these businesses to be compliant as required by the law, but more importantly, to give them the, the resources that they need. We understand that the economy is still in, in a state of, of growth and, and flexibility. So with that said, I applaud your efforts for allowing those businesses to participate in the program um, and be natural stewards of those programs. Uh, so we will be working tentatively over the next month in, um, your recycling program, which means that you're going to be providing, um, mandatory programs in recycling and organics recycling to these businesses. They will be provided a letter, um, to let them know of the service enhancements and of the good work that the city has provided to them. We provide free outreach. We'll, we'll visit all of these businesses that are going to get a new program. Reassure them that we have the training available to them, that we have the resources, um, the posters, the bilingual, spending the time, letting them know that there's a program coming and for them to participate. And then we'll follow up again to monitor the program and make sure that they're participating and very excited about doing the right thing and also helping the city meet its compliance goal, goal, goals. Uh, just, we'll brief through these. These are some of the pieces that they will be receiving in both English and in Spanish. Posters that they can post inside their staff rooms, in the back of house, um, how-to guides, right? How to, um, reduce their food and how to incorporate best practices in their cocinas and their kitchens to ensure that they are limiting their waste and, um, hopefully increasing their, their budgets. This is a sample of one of the labels that they can put on their back of the house containers. Um, some fact sheets on all of the laws that we're going over today in both English and Spanish. And as we look ahead to what residential organics, what that means for us, um, we have a snapshot here of what some of those documents that all of our residents will receive when we turn on the program. All residents are required to receive a notification. So with that said, they would receive a toolkit that says, what is organics? Guess orgánicos, right? What do we want them to place in their bin, right? Please put these in your bin. Please do not put these in your bin. And all of the items are required to be in English and in Spanish. Uh, with that said, some of the outreach that we've done and we've increased our social media presence and partnering with the city to ensure that all of our residents take advantage of all the wonderful programs that you have to keep Coachella clean and beautiful for everybody to enjoy, especially at that new park in that diamond corridor that I just heard about. Looking forward to seeing what that looks like. Um, again, we've upgraded our, our Coachella newsletter to incorporate some videos. Uh, we've also worked with, um, Maritza and the city to incorporate a calendar of events. So when residents receive these newsletters, they know what's up and coming and they can max participate, um, and join us. Commercial news as well. Uh, these are a sample of the inserts that we've placed over the last several months, including, uh, starting our kickoff campaign in twenty twenty-one. Um, recycle this flyers, reciclar esto, right? Contamination is going to be a huge part of education and outreach, which is allowable over the next few years to ensure that everybody gets acclimated and they're putting the right things in the right place. And with that said, On October fourteenth, we invite everybody to look at our informational booth. We'll be talking more about what is organics, que es orgánicos and talk trash as we normally do all day. And it's an absolute pleasure to be with you today. And thank you very much, which is it asses and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions?
I, I do have a quick question. Um, are, is there any outreach to, uh, to children? Because oftentimes they're the ones that are throwing their trash out. I know when my grandkids lived with me, Eric was in charge of throwing trash out. Um, and I'm just wondering if, if they're working with, what you guys are working with the school districts, perhaps to teach children, because they will be the house, you know, the, the head of the, of homes and the household in the future, right? So I just thought it would be a good effort to educate them and appropriate child language so that they too can get on board and perhaps they would be better stores than even sometimes the parents, they'll remind us and the, you know, the grandmas and grandpas, um, where they go. So I'm just wondering if, 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 if there's any outreach to children.
Absolutely. That, you know, that's one of the things that we all know to be true in our homes, right? It's our children who advocate. It's the children who learn at home. And they're the ones that are advocating and telling us what to do and what not to do. And they're the first ones to point to us when, um, when we do something bad. And, um, I know that we advocate for that. And absolutely, we're working with the school districts in continuing to enhance our material and create those programs that will streamline that communication in, um, that K through twelve initiative with those education and outreach. And, um, a lot of our school districts here have pilot programs. So we'll be kicking off a lot of enhancements with them. So, um, the children can be advocates and, you know, be eco heroes and, um, supply items to them so that they can continue the momentum so that when they get home with their parents, um, they can let them know. Please, mom, recycle, right?
Right.
So absolutely, we share that momentum and echo your thoughts and absolutely, we're continuing those enhancements.
Awesome. Thank you.
And there's a touch of the pizza places too, like Domino's, these are Little Caesar's and so hot. Because near residents, I grew up in a community in, in, in incorporated areas. And in those areas, we just have one big dump in some communities. And, and, and so we just started in there. So I moved to Coachella and I thought I was doing good for so long, putting the pizza boxes in the recycling. And then I get a little mail that says pizza boxes don't go in the recycling bin. I'm like, you should have told me that, you know, like when, when I moved in here, I, I come from, you know, so if we could, you know, maybe partner with our, our pizza locations and you put a little like sticker on the pizza boxes, don't recycle. I don't know, just some more creative ways.
Absolutely. I think that's part of our hands-on, um, approach at these booths is we get a lot of those questions and we bring a lot of samples. One of the things that we do is we bring like, we collect our recyclables for the last two weeks. So it's familiar, right? I have my botellas de fabuloso. I have my jars. So it's recognizable and we create that warmth and that welcoming. So absolutely, that live approach is going to be the best. One of the things that we've also enhanced is our welcome kit. So if we have new friends moving in to the Coachella, we're, um, including welcome kits that gives an overview of what we want and where and where it goes and what.
Yeah, that'd be nice when people move into the city.
Absolutely.
I, I didn't grow up in the city, you know, I grew up in, in, in that, in that, we have all these things and just three different boxes, all these colors and we just put the, the, the trash in one, in one dumpster.
Yeah, and as he saw. And we're, and I think, you know, a lot of us are natural, um, even though sometimes some of the technical terms may, may seem abroad. But a lot of us are natural recyclers, especially in our community with our hand. I mean, how many of us have a, we save the butter jar and we go in and it's not butter. It's, you know, beans or salsa, absolutely, uh, Mayor Potem. So I think that a, as we continue this momentum and allowable in S B thirteen eighty-three, we do get two to three years that allow that we're going to take every bit of it because it's the right thing to do to make sure that everybody's placing the right things in the right bin. So absolutely, uh, maybe we can work on a specific campaign as, as we launch some of these initiatives to ensure that, uh, we have some recognizable, maybe we can create a sticker that says city Coachella recycles and, um, we can create that momentum. Absolutely.
Ask, ask the pizza places to put a, just a little sign on their window. Yeah, on their, on the window.
Absolutely.
I, I want to thank you both Bertec and, you know, Maritza and your team for doing such an outstanding job in the educational portion because I think that was key to all these mandates and, you know, for the businesses and the residential areas. And I'm thankful that you guys have come up with very clever and creative ways to make it engaging and interactive to some degree. And, um, so I'm, I'm very thankful for that effort. I think that was all of our concern. And you guys have really kind of just done an outstanding job.
Yeah, one of the things that we really try to do, um, as you visit our booths is a lot of the times, everybody wants to come up to see what the cool chat ski is or the giveaway. But one of the things that we've incorporated and, um, elevated and enhanced. But one of the things that we've incorporated and elevated and enhanced is we're asking you the recycling question, right? Here's a pencil or here's a hoodie bag or reusable tote. Tell me what you recycle at home, right? And it's usually starts with the kids and the parents will lean to the kids to let us know. So that's what we mean by interactive booth and informational booth versus just handing out a piece of paper. We're actually asking for that conversation, which is one of the most important. So visit us at our upcoming booths. Absolutely. Bienvenidos a todos los residentes de Coachella. Los esperamos con brazos abiertos y continuar este, esta gran situación de reciclar. So absolutely.
Can you emails all the?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also, I shared with Frank that you guys have a really outstanding staff that goes out and engages and interacts with the community members. They really are, you know, I think the heart of BRTech and they do an outstanding job out there.
Yeah, they're the superheroes. So when you see them out there, drivers, you know, they enjoy that hello. They really are part of the family and it's, you know, it's a miracle when you get to your curb and your trash is out. But absolutely, the most important thing is that we're part of your community. You know, we know your homes, we know the families and it's an absolute pleasure. So on behalf of the entire BRTech family, especially the drivers and our staff that's out there, absolutely, it's our job, it's our goal, and it's really, it's our honor to do what we do. We love what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is a public hearing item. So adopt resolution 2022-74 approving the fourth amendment to the integrated solid waste management services. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:38. What is the wishes of the city council?
Motion to approve.
Some motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by council member Beaman Jacinto. Can we get a roll call please?
Councilor De La Sosa.
I.
Councilor Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaman Jacinto.
Yes.
Mayor Boating Gonzalez.
I.
Mayor Hefnandis.
I. I'm number 15. This is adopt resolution dash 20, 2022-75, authorizing the collection of residential solid waste for fiscal year 2022-2023 through the county tax rule.
Good evening, members of the council once more. I have one more slide and it's tied to the last item as well. This one really just places it, authorizes placement of the residential fee for the holler service on the tax rule for this fiscal year. And so this is a quick summary of what that rate is. It's going up a little under $2 for residential. It's 6%. It's actually going up less than CPI this year, although generally our standard has been CPI plus the increase to disposal. So as a result of the negotiated contract, residential fee is actually going to be less than it normally would be. And commercial is going up 13%. That really is a straight combination of CPI increase and disposal increase. With that, that concludes my presentation and happy to answer.
There is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did receive, the city did receive a letter from a resident and the idea, in opposition to item number 15, and the letter forged to the council for your chair.
Thank you and thank you to that, for that letter. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. What is the wishes of the city council? There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Someone's jumping for that.
Yeah.
Councilor De La Sosa.
I.
Councilor Delgado.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaman Jacinto.
Yes.
Mayor Boating Gonzalez.
I.
Mayor Hefnandis.
I. Fordham, item number 16. This is resolution 22-76. This is an amendment to the City Coachella General Plan Update, EIR, and general plan, general plan amendment number 22-01 and change the land use designation for existing 7.8 acres vacant site on industrial district.
Thank you, mayor members of the city council. This item before you tonight is the city initiated effort. Before going into the presentation, I just ask if the city manager can talk about the genesis of this effort.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. The item for you is an item that we needed to get approved for the TCC grant during the TCC grant process. We identified an affordable housing project. The purpose of this project was to make our application more enticing and address a need, not only countywide, but statewide. The issue with this one was the time crunch and the accessibility to land. The City of Coachella owns very few large parcels. This would be our second largest parcel that we own. We need to, we needed site control to do this. So this is unfortunately in an industrial area, but we feel it's a good site for the proposed project for the TCC grant, which contributes a mixed use, affordable housing and workforce development center. The partner identified for this was Chelsea. They've done a great job building a lot of affordable housing projects in Coachella. They just finished the probably a whole project. They're moving forward triple E. So this will be another project that they would spearhead. So that's a little historic background on why this site was chosen for the TCC grant. And, you know, due to the requirements that were necessary, we have about a month to do the zone amendment to comply with the grant. So this is the item before you and Gabriel Perez will provide more specifics.
Okay. Thank you, city manager Martin. So this item before you is a general plan amendment and also a zone change. And so what's before you today is a general plan amendment from the current designation of industrial district to urban employment. And these are for two parcels the city owns in the rental Coachella Business Park. So the total site is 7.8 acres. The changes zone would change the existing zoning from heavy industrial to urban employment center. And this is city initiated since we own the property. This is a vicinity map that shows the two properties. To the west is the Union Pacific Railroad. To the north, you have existing industrial uses. And so there's a few businesses that are operating that do industrial related uses, includes Western Waterworks, Jones Brothers Construction, ATS Stone Corporation. To the east, you have Whitstable, which is agricultural packing company and Sun World. And to the south is vacant property and the nearest street is Industrial Way. So the city owns the site. As city manager Martin mentioned, the city did submit a grant application to the state with the idea that there could be about 116 residential units on site and also office space for the Southern California Mountains Foundation and Urban Conservation Corps. And this would be a mixed use project on 3.66 acres of the site. There's no project before you, but this would allow for land uses that could facilitate office and residential uses. As I mentioned, the heavy industrial zoning would change to urban employment center zone and the industrial district general plan designation would change to urban employment center. The types of uses that are permitted for urban employment center are office, research and development and education. Retail and service uses would be considered secondary uses in that zone. And manufacturing, distribution, warehouses, which are primary uses in the heavy industrial zone with the rezoning, these would be secondary uses. So they don't necessarily, they wouldn't be uses that would go away, but they would be secondary uses to those of office, research, development and housing. On the zoning map in purple, this is the heavy industrial zone in the city. And so it's surrounded, the site is surrounded by those uses. So this would actually change that to urban employment center. And then on the general plan map, urban employment center designations do exist in the city. So the zona central area, which is east of the railroad and to the north of the CBWD headquarters, that area is urban employment district as well as areas that are closer to the airports or our sphere of influence, but also the southerly areas of the city kind of by Armtech and the Vistas Canbya community. So this use has been a use that has been placed in general plan adjacent to industrial district's general plan land use. For that land use, a maximum of five stories is permitted and residential density ranges are permitted between 30 to 65 units per acre. So it does allow for a pretty high density. There is water and sewer service infrastructure available on industrial way. So if we undertake this rezoning and general plan amendment, this also can be a candidate for the city's six cycle housing element. One of the challenges we've had as a city is to identify sites that the state HCD will accept for the site inventory because these sites need to be less than 10 acres, not under agricultural production and have available infrastructure like sewer and water that's immediately adjacent to those sites. And this is just the general plan amendment exhibit showing the change in land use that's proposed. In addition to the general plan amendment and zone change, staff worked with Terra Nova Planning and Research to prepare an addendum to the Coachella general plan update. So that's prepared and provided in your staff report. And it was concluded on that addendum that with the substantial evidence of the project, meaning the general plan amendment and rezone, that it's not expected to result in impacts beyond those previously identified and mitigated in the Coachella general plan environmental impact report. So there would be no significant impacts that would occur as a result of this action. And the staff does recommend the city council adopt the resolution to adopt the addendum and approve the general plan amendment and also to introduce ordinance 1198 for first reading for the change of zone. That's the end of my staff report. I'm available to answer any questions that you have. And we also have Kelly Clark representing Terra Nova Planning and Research. You have any questions on the environmental addendum to the general plan EIR?
I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:49. Counselor, are there any questions?
I don't have any questions.
We have public comments or an hour?
Because public comments ran out that there is a public hearing?
Yeah.
On this item?
Yeah.
I don't see anybody that submitted their applications because. Gabriel, I do have a little bit of concern with the fact that, you know, and this is a question, broader question to you. And it's really, how do we maintain our jobs, housing balance? You know, if we're, if we're moving in here to, in an industrial parcel, yes, the city owns the parcel. Yes, the parcel could probably be used for, you know, City Coachella Economic Corporation if we wanted to, but there's a move here to create residential development. And there's a move here as well to put residential development in an otherwise industrial zone. And, and so we really got to think about the compatibility and the design. And then the other side of it is that if we're eliminating industrial spaces, where are we replacing it at? And what's the thought of there? Because ultimately, you know, we don't want to be a commuter city. We want to make sure that we have a good job housing balance. So what is the consideration? And I get it, the TCC grant, I understand. I know where we're going. But what is the overall consideration as this happened? And then, and then at the same time, you know, while this is the first part of the planning process, which is a general plan amendment, you know, I do expect that the architecture renderings and the, and what ultimately gets approved there is pretty cool and blends into and makes a cool little industrial space.
So I can answer that a tiny bit and that's.
I'm not asking you, I'm asking Gabriel.
Well, I get that. I get that. But what I'm saying is that I have the same concerns.
You're not voicing them. So I asked a question. I am asking a question to Gabriel.
Comment.
You can do it after Gabriel responds.
I was told because it was kind of being connected to the rail. So I had the same concerns. And so, you know, Gabriel, if you want to elaborate on that, but I thought that was the whole reason. Jesus Christ.
In regards to the question, Mr. Mayor, the purpose of the reason why we identified the site was for the obvious, but in regards to answering the industrial portion of it, the city will be looking at its sphere of influence to capture more industrial land in the future as we move and rezone certain areas for the arena numbers to try and meet the state requirement, or we will, once we look for future annexation, to look at future industrial entertainment districts for the city to grow. So we don't have a problem capturing future use for the industrial park because we have so much unincorporated land around us so we can address those issues at a later time when we, if the council decides to move forward with annexation.
Okay, but what about what we control currently and what we currently have within our control to effectuate land use policies and changes? So are there areas that we want to think about as a community and as a city to allow for more, you know, jobs, et cetera? Or what's the overall approach here, Gabriel Perez?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the general plan and zoning, we have a lot of industrial land compared to a lot of our surrounding cities, right? And so, so we do have a substantial amount of land. I don't think the intent here is to start rezoning all of our industrial properties in the city. I think this is going to be a rare instance where that happens. But we do have a very creative land use that was created with the general plan update in 2015, which is the urban employment center. So instead of saying everything has to be exclusively heavy industrial, everything has to be exclusively residential, everything has to be exclusively commercial, this land use actually allows for a mixture of all those together, which is, which allows for those opportunities, right? Where it makes sense to have housing, but also to allow for office, to still allow for manufacturing. And so a lot of that's going to occur through the planning process. We didn't have that land use before, right? So everything was very specific and separated. And so this provides the opportunity for us to be a little bit more creative with that zone that didn't exist before.
And I'm, I want to address something and because it was just mentioned here and really, there has been no site selection with respect to any commuter rail that's coming in here. And so I'm not sure where that notion of this is tied to the train or the, where's that, where's that coming from? Is that you, Gabriel? Is that you, Dr. Martin? Like, I don't, I don't know who's saying that or why is it saying that? And because it was just mentioned here in the comments.
When we do the rail study, now that RCTC has approved the scenario, which is favorable to City Coachella, where we will move to do a feasibility study to identify sites. This will part one of the sites to identify along with zona central and other areas along the rail. So we haven't identified a specific site for rail, but we will do that in the upcoming feasibility study.
I want to just caution the staff here that we really need to think about true community build out. And, and while, yes, we are going after grants and we want to get grants, the grant should not dictate our ultimate land use. Like, you know, general plans and those processes, they exist for, you know, there's been a lot of great community input. And so we really want to think about how the build out of the community works. And yes, I understand we're going after grants. And yes, I understand that we want to get grants and that's good. But ultimately, when these items get built or when these things get built, we have to really take into consideration how the land uses are going to function as a whole. So, so I hope that the idea is not to put, you know, the railroad stop here or this is like, who's making that decision and why isn't that a community process? But I hope that when we think about that opportunity, that we're really thinking about maximizing ultimately what the build out and what the built community will look like. So that's a, that's a greater, that's a greater conversation, a bigger conversation and one in which if it's, if there's this notion that it's tied to the site, that that's a false, like just come from whoever's saying that.
And so, so that kind of raises my concerns, right? Because I did have, I did have. I did have quite a few concerns of of where these. Where the housing element was gonna go and why it was chosen there. And why it wasn't, you know, in other places in the city that I think would be a little closer to, you know, kind of density where, you know, the rest of the population was. And and I was told repeatedly that it was, you know, put there, well, for two reasons. One, because we own the parcel. And then two was because that was where the where the rail stop was going to be. You know, at or possibly at, because there wasn't any other locations to have a rail stop.
We, the 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 first point is correct. We have a limited land that the city owns, right? I think our biggest, we just sold our biggest property for market rate housing. This will be our third biggest site we have. We have a nine-acre agro agricultural pond area. That's our DA owned. So this will be our second biggest, third biggest site that we own. And we chose the site because of site control was the the key element. You know, when we looked at rail, it was one of the areas identified along with Zona Central, along with areas along the the wrecking zone area as well. But that won't be identified until we do the study. The study will determine exactly where that site would be, what's the most feasible site. But, you know, we looked at it from a big picture and and looking at our limited assets that we had with the city. There was no way we would be able to acquire land and submit an affordable housing project. And the affordable housing project was key to this application. I think seven cities applied for three, three, three spots. And we we heard from our technical advisor that the affordable housing project separated us from the pack. So this was the the key element for a successful, what we hopeful to be a successful TCC grant.
And so and so I was, you know, it was told to me that it was specifically put there so that there, when. It would make a stronger location for the rail stop because then they would have access to. You know, the the housing element that would go right there alongside of it. And then were there gonna be a workforce development there as well?
Yeah, the Conservation Corps will be a mixed use along with them. And that's a workforce development center that will create jobs and train. Residents of Coachella to enter that industry.
So that's that's what I was communicated with, is that because there is gonna be a workforce development, because there was gonna be a housing element. That it made a stronger or more appealing spot to put a rail stop and that. And that zona central.
Yeah, the zona central has also been a location for a rail site. We we've identified a few staff-wise. But as I indicated, we won't be able to actually determine one until we do the study. The study will give us the best location, the most feasible location. And, you know, cost to develop that site.
And then when would the assessment be done?
We're gonna shoot for the ball. That's gonna be one of our next priority task force projects. The season will work out. We're working with RCTC. They're sending us examples of RFPs. So we're gonna get that going and hopefully bring that to council sometime in the fall.
And then when do we, when we would possibly have word back from TCC?
October, November is kind of our our date. And then I I know the the names of the cities that applied to the grant. So it's only the city of Indio and Coachella are Southern California. Cities that applied, Bakersfield, Richmond, Stockton, Porterville Unified School District and Community Partners Slate Z, which is a nonprofit in LA County.
So I'm really confused about the conversation right now. I I I thought I heard. That this area was selected because the housing element was gonna. So Gabriel Perez, is the idea to further rezone industrial area? And put more residential zones in the industrial area? Because what I'm hearing right now is that in terms of what the council member Doug Datta was told. Was that this site was selected because there was gonna be a housing element. And the housing element is a general policy. But I'm what I'm assuming is that what maybe is being said is that there's gonna be more. More residential zones in industrial space. So is that the plan?
So so how this works, you know, the housing element isn't adopted yet, right? Six cycle. So that'll be coming before the planning commission in council soon. The challenge becomes identifying sites. So two of the sites that are consultant identified. They asked if these sites could work because of the available infrastructure. We have a lot of land in the city, right? We have a lot of land that's bigger than ten acres. A lot of that's under ag production and a lot of that land doesn't have available water and sewer services. So these two sites were identified also by the consultant because we have site control. You might recall the other two rezonings that we did last year. That was done with private property, right? We had to get agreement from those private property owners. To rezone their property for the purposes of the housing element. This, we don't propose to do any housing on private property that's industrially zoned. So these would be the two sites that we have control of, that we could rezone ourselves. So the housing element, like if you choose to add it to the site inventory, this has to go to the city council. To adopt the housing element, right? So the housing, the council could choose that, you know, these aren't appropriate sites for this use. And that they're not appropriate sites for the housing element. So you're gonna have that ability to make that decision with the housing element. What's before you today is not related to the housing element. At this time, it's just the land use changes that are being proposed. And if you think it's a suitable site for this type of use.
Well, I think at this point, we've already added this portion into the TCC. So I can't see us, for me, not moving forward with it. Because I do think that we have a very strong chance of being awarded the TCC grant. And I'm told that we're one of the few cities that does have a housing portion to it. So I know that makes us a stronger candidate to be awarded. And so for me, I I think that because it's already been added in the TCC and then that's already been submitted. And I know they asked for a few, a little bit more information. That was submitted to them as well. And so, you know, because of that, I I think that, you know, we should move forward with the the change of zone. And the addendum, you know, simply because I think we have a strong chance of being awarded a TCC grant.
Yeah, I I think we're all there.
Yeah.
I I I think I think the the point that is being made by myself is that we need to be very careful. That we ultimately think about the built environment and that we don't let our. Wanting to go after grants dictate our land use policies. It should be the other way around. Our land use policies should dictate how we build out our community and where we put our grants. You gotta, you gotta think about that. And that's important because what you're gonna have here is is. Is a residential, high-density, five-story apartment complex within an industrial area. And so when that gets built out, you know, there's gonna be an interesting. Land use there and there's gonna be an interesting, could be a mismatch. If it's not properly done. So that so that's what I'm saying. And Gabriel, like. We we really, really need to think about when when this project does come forward. What it, how how's it look and how's it function? And there there's examples of of this being done right. But there's also a lot of examples of this being done wrong. So, you know, we'll we'll look to the next phase of of this. But but at this point. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
This is, uh, let me go ahead and close the public hearing. And can we get a roll call?
Yeah.
I.
If you'd love me to read the orders to the record, order the city council, City Coachella, approving a change of zone number twenty-two dash oh-two. A zoning classification from heavy industrial to urban employment center on a seven-point acre site. Looking at the southwest corner of Industrial Way and Avenue fifty-two.
We're gonna go ahead and take public comments right now. It is eight o'clock. I left it up.
Gracias.
Is there any other speaker that would like to address the city council? Carlos, anybody on there?
We do have a hand raised.
We do have a hand raised for Corina.
Corina, welcome. We do have a nice. Proclamation for you, Corina.
There we go. Okay. Corina, you can go ahead and speak. We have a three minutes. Corina, can you hear me? Can you try talking? You should be a muted.
Don't look like she's there.
Can you guys hear me? Sorry, I was talking. I thought that you could hear me. Good evening, Mayor and council members of the City of Coachella. I want to first apologize for not being able to be there in person this evening to receive the proclamation. But thank you to our board member for doing so. I just wanted to be able to jump onto public comment and extend my sincere thanks on behalf of Virago Health. For the proclamation and just from sincerely say thank you to you, Mayor Hernandez. And to the city council members for all of the support. We are very excited to finally have this project come to fruition. And as someone who. Was raised in the City of Coachella, I couldn't be any more proud to have the building there. As beautiful as it is and to be able to offer the much-needed services to the community. So once again, thank you on behalf of Virago Health and we look forward to seeing everyone there for our ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Thank you.
The good thing, Corina, that that the mayor can now go to the ribbon-cutting ceremony and present it there again. Yeah, so we look forward to attending.
Awesome. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Corina. Andrew, any other speakers?
I don't see any more hands raised.
Okay, we'll move on now to. Back to our meeting. We'll go to item number seventeen, Drancho Escondido Event Venue. This is to adopt resolution twenty-two dash seventy-nine. Gabriel.
And Mayor and Council, before Gabriel starts presenting. I'll be recusing myself on this item because I board my horses at this property. So I'll be leaving the meeting now and I'll come back in. Once the item is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabriel.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This item, Rentril Escondido Event Venue. This is an entertainment permit that they are requesting the applicants, Margarita and Lionel Lopez. The vicinity map shows that this property is located. At the northern part of the city, along Avenue forty-four. There's the entrance driveway from Avenue forty-four. To the property. The property is in the residential estate zone, eight point six acres total. There are some existing site improvements on there, but it's largely surrounded by vacant property to the north. To the east and to the west. On the other side of Avenue forty-four is the City of Indio. You'll be able to see that in the updated map here. So here's a more zoomed out view of that site. And so you could see Indio, there is the Taralago Four Seasons Community. Located to the north, which is separated by this other vacant property. And so that community is one thousand. The nearest property in that community is one thousand one hundred twenty-five feet away. From this site at the northerly part of the driveway entrance. The project description, the applicant, that they are proposing outdoor events, an event venue. That's outdoors, that would allow family events, birthdays, anniversaries, weddings, mariachi practice. The driveway that I referenced is a seven hundred fifty-one foot driveway. The lot is a flag lot. The applicant proposes events to occur on Saturdays and then the events. Would end at twelve AM each day. It's anticipated the events would start after five o'clock. The maximum number of guests that they propose onsite is two hundred. They also proposed the use of onsite licensed security for all events. And so it'd be one security guard for every fifty people. Also, one, let the council know is that entertainment permits are subject to review after one year. And renewal by the city council. So if there were issues related to compliance with the conditions of approval on this permit. You'd have the opportunity to evaluate that before the end of the first year of this permit. There are existing improvements at the site, so they are proposing a seventeen thousand square foot plaza. Well, they do have a seventeen thousand square foot plaza area with kitchen building, restroom building, cupboard stage area. With concrete dance floor, gathering area and concrete sidewalks, which I'll show you in a few pictures. The wedding ceremonies would be held on a turf area in the plaza area. There is an existing stage. There's on-street onsite, I'm sorry, onsite parking of a hundred ten spaces with additional sixty overflow spaces. This is a site plan and so the dry, the dry aisle that I mentioned is seven hundred one feet long. It it comes into this looped driveway around the event facility. So there is an existing barn. The applicant does have an existing residence onsite. And they do have, they do stage or house horses onsite. So they have made existing improvements that are there today. So it's this plaza area that I referenced earlier, that seventeen thousand square square feet. And so those that are guests would be able to park in these areas to the north, to the east. And this would actually be the main parking area to the west. And then this is the overflow parking to the south. The the northerly driveway is improved with asphalt, but the rest of the driveway is improved with aggregate base. And that helps with some of the dust control onsite. So this is a look at that driveway that extends from Avenue forty-four to the flag portion of the lot. Here are the existing improvements so that applicant has landscaped it. There's a building that you can see there where, which is the stage area and what would be used for a dance floor. And so the applicant does propose to use amplified sound. And so that's where amplified sound equipment would be staged. And that would point in the southeastern direction. There's a restroom building as well as a kitchen building onsite. As far as noise, just want to inform the council that the applicant was operating their facility without the permit. Last year. And so we did receive complaints. From neighbors in Indio and the Taralago community about the operations onsite. And the main concerns were about noise, some about traffic. So we we requested the applicant prepare a noise analysis. Así que pedimos que el candidato prepare una analisis de ruido para las actividades en el sitio. Para asegurarse de que cualquier cosa que están haciendo en el sitio pueda ser llevada a cabo sin violar el código municipal, nuestros órdenes de ruido. Así que los Asociados de LSU prepararon ese estudio, que se proporcionó en su reporte de trabajo. Y se determinó que pueden cumplir con las órdenes de ruido mientras estén 50 pies de distancia de donde se genera el ruido. Que el nivel de ruido no es más de 85.5 décibels. Y así el estudio evaluó en realidad cuatro diferentes receptores, que incluimos la comunidad de Terolago, el norte de Indio, el resort de Cachala, que está en Coachella, cerca de la Ruta Dylan. Una dejeza que está ubicada en Indio a la norte y el parque de Love's Travel Stop. Recibimos ocho cartas de miembros de la comunidad de Four Seasons, la comunidad de Terolago, con preocupaciones por el ruido y el tráfico. Había una petición, la enviaron con 24 firmas en comparación con el proyecto. Recibimos, recibimos una carta recibida de uno de los residentes que no era necesariamente oído, pero querían asegurarse de que el personal del Consejo de Ciudad considerara los impactos del uso en el sitio. El personal ha evaluado la propuesta, hemos añadido condiciones que sentimos que serían importantes para asegurar que la operación podría cumplir con el código municipal y cuidar de algunos de los, los preocupaciones que han sido abordados por los miembros de la comunidad. Solo recordemos que el Consejo de Ciudad tendrá la oportunidad de revisar esta aplicación después de renovación después de un año. Así que el personal recomienda que el Consejo de Ciudad adopte la resolución mejorando el permiso de entretenimiento y adoptar la declaración negativa que se preparó para este, este item. Con los hallazgos y condiciones listados. Allí fuimos contactados ayer por la banda de indios que llaman Awa Caliente en la que se pidió que consultara si había actividades de terreno alterado en el futuro. Y así el personal recomienda que el Consejo de Ciudad incluya esa condición. Eso es el fin de mi reporte de trabajo, estoy feliz de responder cualquier pregunta. Creo que el candidato está uniendo, está disponible y uniendo remotamente, si no en las chambres del Consejo de Ciudad en este momento.
Gracias. Este es un tema de publicidad, voy a abrir la publicidad a las 8:19. ¿Hay oradores que quieren dirigir al Consejo de Ciudad en este tema?
Tengo dos, tengo dos manos levantadas, o en realidad tres. Pero también quiero mencionar que recibimos una carta para esto, para el número 17, del Casino de Fantasy Springs, del gerente general Paul Ryan en oposición a los ruidos. Pero indica que no se oponerá y yo cité, si permite limitar el tiempo para las actividades a las horas de noche después de la cena y las actividades de la noche se han terminado. Y la carta ha sido enviada al consejo. Así que voy a ir adelante y permitir que el primer orador hable, déjenme aquí por un momento. Nuestro primer orador será Maggie Lopez. Jason, ¿puede usted permitir que Maggie Lopez habla? No estoy dando la opción aquí. Jason, si estás ahí, ¿puede usted, alguien, permitir que Maggie Lopez hable?
Sí, vaya Maggie.
O, gracias.
Maggie, si pudiera, gracias, bienvenido. Pudieron desactivar ustedes mismos.
Sí, ¿pueden escucharme?
Sí.
Hola, señorías y consejos, gracias por permitirme estar aquí esta noche. Primero, quiero disculparme, en realidad estoy en México con mi hija. Ella está en una escala, 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 así que está aquí representando el valle de Coachella y los Estados Unidos en San Luis Potosí, México. Estoy aquí para responder cualquier pregunta que tengan sobre el tema de los eventos.
Gracias, Maggie. Su próximo orador, por favor.
Andrea, ¿está en el muro?
Deborah Schuster.
¿Pueden escucharme?
Sí.
Hola, Gabriel, sé que usted y yo hablamos el año pasado. Gracias por invitarnos a participar esta noche. Mi esposo y yo nos mudamos aquí a Los Ángeles a fines de noviembre. Somos residentes de Four Seasons en Terolago y como creo que otros residentes que están aquí esta noche, algunos de ellos creo que van a hablar. Nuestros hogares están en la parte de atrás de la propiedad, en la parte de atrás de la Avenida 44. No tenemos nada detrás de nosotros excepto eso, el wash y la, y la Avenida 44. Como dije en la carta que envié, mi esposo y yo no tenemos ninguna objeción en absoluto al uso de la propiedad para el tipo de eventos que se describieron. En realidad, mi esposo ha sido un guitarrista profesional durante casi 50 años y ha hecho su vida exclusivamente jugando a las fiestas, eventos, diferentes venues. Así que, usted sabe, la idea de tener música amplificada y fiestas no es objectionable para nosotros en absoluto. La razón por la que nos involucramos en este asunto es porque en principios de diciembre y pasando, creo que a través de enero, hubo varias veces donde, bueno, la primera vez que lo escuchamos, no teníamos idea de qué estaba pasando, pero la música era tan fuerte que podíamos oírlo con nuestras ventanas cerradas. Y cuando salimos al patio, era como si la fiesta estuviera en nuestro patio. Así que estábamos un poco confundidos por eso. Y a lo largo del curso de los próximos meses, los momentos en que la música dejaba variaban. Un par de veces dejaba, creo, como a las 10, pero llamamos a la policía, como hicieron otros residentes, para pedirles que vayan allí y, y pedirles que either lower it or stop. Y creo que una vez que sucedió, otra vez no sucedió. Lo peor de eso fue cuando la música continuó tan fuerte como era hasta como una hora de la mañana. Y usted sabe, literalmente no podíamos dormir en nuestro hogar. Así que usted sabe, eso era preocupante para nosotros. He escuchado todas las, usted sabe, propuestas de condiciones, supongo, no sé si es la palabra correcta, pero la, los requisitos operativos que voy adelante. Y creo que todavía estoy un poco confundida con los momentos del día y el nivel de la música. Y también el comentario que, que no sé si es siendo propuesto que los eventos no, absolutamente no pasen por la media tarde.
Ms. Chester, nosotros, Ms. Chester, solo quiero recordaros que estamos limitados a tres minutos.
Okay.
Vamos adelante y déjame darle otro 30 segundos para que puedas terminar.
Okay, all right, así que mis preguntas, mis preguntas son, ¿cuánto tarde son estos, pueden estos eventos, pueden pasar por la media tarde? ¿Y hay diferentes niveles de ruido hasta las 10:00 p.m. y después de las 10:00 p.m.?
Gracias por sus comentarios. El próximo orador, por favor.
Okay, gracias, solo un momento. Nuestro próximo orador será familia, tres minutos.
Buenas noches, ¿pueden escucharme?
Sí.
Lo haré, lo haré rápido. Creo que en Coachella necesitamos instalaciones como esta. Mirando las imágenes, parece que es una localización bien mantenida. Y espero que ustedes concedan a esta persona el permiso porque creo que necesitamos más instalaciones como esta en, en Coachella donde la gente puede tener la ceremonia en lugar de conducirse de la ciudad. Espero que el dinero pueda quedarse en la ciudad. Eso es todo lo que tengo que decir, gracias.
El próximo orador, por favor.
Nuestro próximo orador es Eric Kilbo. Eric, si puede desactivar usted, there you go.
Lo hice, gracias. Vivo en la comunidad de Four Seasons, en realidad escribí la primera carta que es con sus accesorios. No tengo objeción al desarrollo en sí, siempre y cuando sigan las órdenes de ruido. Hubo algunos eventos antes del año donde era muy fuerte, podía oírlo dentro de mi casa, pero he sido seguro y he visto publicaciones en línea por el dueño de la propiedad que, usted sabe, a lo largo del futuro no habrá ningún problema. Así que estoy dispuesto a darles el beneficio del duda y, usted sabe, me gustaría tenerlo reevaluado en seis meses o un año y ver cómo va. Así que parece que han hecho muchos cambios conservables de la propiedad y soy capitalista, les deseo todo lo mejor. Tengo una preocupación por el tráfico en la Avenida 44, en particular que la intersección donde el tránsito es, es muy oscuro. Y la ruta, las velocidades en esa ruta pueden ser excesivas. Caminé 45 millas por hora en esa ruta y he visto que la gente se acerca a mí a 70. Y en la noche alguien podría morir allí tirando de la tránsito. Así que la ciudad podría considerar agregar una luz de calle, no una luz de tráfico, pero una luz de calle o, o tal vez incluso un señal de parada solo por seguridad. Eso sería mi único preocupación real, gracias.
Gracias, Eric. El próximo orador, por favor.
Gracias, esos son todas las manos levantadas que tengo aquí, a menos que tengamos a alguien en las chambres del consejo.
No, no hay. A este punto voy a ir adelante y cerrar la publicidad, es 8:27. Consejo.
¿Hicimos, veo que tenemos una carta también para Fantasy Springs y Cabazon, banda de indios, y vi que tenemos una condición adicional, pero tiene Awa Caliente, banda de indios. ¿Cuál fue nuestra comunicación? ¿Reaccionamos a Cabazon y los fans de Fantasy Springs? Para el personal.
Sí, gracias consejo miembro, Galasa. Fui capaz de contactar a Awa Caliente, banda de indios. Y así, tienen.
Son, son, son dos tribus diferentes, ¿verdad? Awa Caliente no es Fantasy Springs.
Sí, así que.
Que es Fantasy Springs.
Correcto, sí, así que obtuvimos comunicaciones de, de ambas tribus o específicamente el, el casino que la tribu posee. Y así eran, ellos poseían el golf del Bosque Eagle y obviamente los casinos cerca. Y prefieren tener cualquier cosa que, que ocurre durante el día ocurre en realidad en la noche. Y creo que es porque tienen golf en el Bosque Eagle Golf Course y así quieren que sea un ambiente más tranquilo. Podrías probablemente preguntarle a este candidato esta pregunta, pero sé que hablando con ellos, los eventos que están planeando no empezar hasta las cinco. Creo que empezarían a las seis, así que esos serían las horas de noche. No creo que planen tener eventos que empiecen a las noches. Las condiciones que dice no eventos podrían comenzar antes de las nueve, pero el consejo podría decidir, usted sabe, debido a esas preocupaciones, especificar que los eventos no pueden comenzar hasta las cinco. Pero me preguntaría al candidato si eso es algo que es adecuado para ellos. En cuanto a la banda de indios que llaman Awa Caliente, están preocupados por algunos recursos culturales en la zona general. Así que es por eso que si hubiera, no habría ningún terreno alterado en las actividades, solo quieren contactarse, pero no están oídos por este proyecto.
¿Cuál es el momento en que Cabazon sugiere, la carta no tiene, solo dice una vez que terminamos y así obviamente si quiero avanzar y apoyar, quiero asegurarme de que, usted sabe, colaboramos con nuestra tribu. Asegurarme, hice este comentario cuando estábamos trabajando en dispensarios cerca de la tribu. Así que sé que la carta dice que hay, usted sabe, muchas preocupaciones sobre la actividad en el momento y nuestra es la de las nueve. No quiero como solo hacer una hora hoy sin una consulta adecuada. ¿Tienen en sus conversaciones con ellos, qué se discutió?
No, no he tenido ninguna conversación directa con ellos, como no había contacto directo con la persona que escribió la carta. Pero, pero también, usted sabe, no había mucho tiempo para que pudiera hacer ese contacto. Así que lo que estoy comunicando es lo que se proporcionó en la carta.
El candidato está. El candidato está levantando la mano, ¿puede usted permitirlo?
Sí.
Así que, sí.
Sí, lo haré.
El candidato no va a saber lo que la tribu quiere. Quiero decir, a este punto, si tenemos preguntas directas al candidato, háganlas.
Sí, no tengo preguntas directas excepto en nuestras conversaciones con la tribu.
Okay, ¿hay otras preguntas?
Gabriel, respecto a algunos de los requisitos, ¿hubo alguna preocupación de los candidatos sobre ser capaces de cumplir alguno de esos requisitos?
En realidad, no, no he oído nada de lo que el candidato dijo sobre eso. Y hablamos con el candidato también sobre la carta de Fantasy Springs, así que lo animamos a hablar con Fantasy Springs Casino, así que eso puede haber sucedido, no sé. Pero en cuanto a las condiciones de aprobación, no he recibido ningún preocupación de poder cumplir. Porque hay algunos, algunos requisitos estrictos en there, así como sobre el ruido. Hay un requisito, si se convierte en un problema, que el personal podría requerir que tengan dispositivos de monitoreo de ruido en el sitio que nos permita ver lo que realmente está sucediendo y así esos sensores existen. Pero, pero a este punto solo recomendamos que cumplan sus órdenes de ruido y lo monitará durante el año.
Gracias, y yo quiero hacer comentarios que yo, yo apoyo, usted sabe, rancho que están en la ciudad de Coachella, no tenemos muchos, pero yo estoy en apoyo total de su operación. Y por Rancho Escondido, vi esa propiedad hace años y han hecho muchos inversiones en esa propiedad. Y usted sabe, definitivamente no quiero detenerlos de poder continuar operando. Y así apoyo el, el evento y también, usted sabe, feliz de verlos pasar por el proceso adecuado y obtener su permiso de evento. Así que con eso apoyo la forma en que ha pasado como es, con las horas siendo entre las 12:00 p.m. y las 12:00 a.m. Usted sabe, no creo que muchos de estos rancho tienen, usted sabe, la música fuerte pasando el mediodía que realmente empieza tal vez después de las ocho. Usted sabe, pero no quiero limitarlos. Gracias, Gabriel.
Yo en realidad fui y conduje el sitio y la semana pasada, entonces, usted sabe, había, estaba allí y solo senté y escuché respecto al ruido. Y obviamente cuando hay, cuando hay desierto alrededor de ti, el, el ruido tiende a llevar, pero no es nada que es de un tipo alarmante. Y, y lo que pasa o lo que está sucediendo aquí es que tienes tipos de áreas suburbanas que están cerca de, encogiendo en terrenos de farmland. Y así usted, usted tiene, usted tiene, usted sabe, propietarios privados y capitalistas en su propio entorno, están tratando de maximizar la utilidad de su tierra. Deberían ser capaces, usted sabe, y sí, la gente ha mudado de, de diferentes lugares y, y usted, nos damos la bienvenida, pero hay muchos que están aquí y han estado aquí y quieren usar su tierra. Y, y creo que podemos, podemos acomodar. Creo que Eric dijo lo mejor que que, que, que les den la oportunidad de ser exitosos y mejorar ellos mismos. Y si hay problemas en el año de ahora, esto estará de nuevo ante nosotros y podemos, podemos mirar eso más allá. Pero en términos de dónde está el proyecto ahora mismo, usted sabe, condeno a Maggie Lopez y su familia por, usted sabe, seguir el proceso y pasar por el, el proceso de la autorización y, y, y crear un bonito venue, que es realmente bueno. Así que todo lo mejor para usted, pero estoy bien con, con la forma en que se propone y los órdenes de sonido y, y, usted sabe, con suerte, con suerte serán exitosos.
Pero eso no haré una motion para aprobar.
Bueno, segundo, solo, usted sabe, solo quiero asegurarme, reiterar que trabajamos con la tribu, usted sabe, no vamos a tener una fiesta de día cuando están teniendo su negocio en curso. Así que solo quiero asegurarme, usted sabe, que trabajamos con ellos, no quiero, aquí puede ser más informal, pero así podemos continuar trabajando con ellos y, y eso.
Estoy en acuerdo contigo.
Sí.
Nefteley, y que tenemos, tenemos que honrar a nuestros partners de la comunidad y tienen un negocio existente. Y no soy golfer, ni estoy defendiendo a los golfers, pero tienen un negocio existente y si va a encoger su negocio, deberíamos ser buenos socios y debemos hablar con ellos para llegar a algún tipo de acuerdo que tal vez entre ciertos horas, sus horas de trabajo, que el volumen es un poco menor. Y creo que podríamos, podríamos llegar a algún tipo de compromiso o es un ganar-ganar para ambos.
Obviamente, como, como para excluir eventos de inicio puede no funcionar porque si tienes una ceremonia de casas, Yeah, obviously, like you, like, like to exclude events from starting might not work because you start a wedding ceremony, before, you know, like, you know, it was not loud, obviously, when the party starts, so we're like, we need to have that sort of common courtesy to our neighbors. Uh obviously, given we're providing some noise, uh you know, limitations already, so, um I feel comfortable and the good thing we get to, you know, review it a year from now and see, you know, pros and cons from it, but yeah, I mean, with that, I'll second uh Councilmember Delgado's motion.
Okay.
There's a motion. Second, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
Aye. We'll move, we'll move on now to item number eighteen. This is the resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero four, authorizing collection of residential sewer rates. I'll move approval. There are no changes to the rates. You know, from the public hearing, eight thirty-seven, if anyone's like to speak on this item. Seeing that, I'm gonna close the public hearing at eight thirty-eight. I will motion to approve. Is there a second? There's a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Um is Councilmember Beaman Jacinto back in?
No.
I, no, okay. Councilmember Delgado?
Yes.
Councilmember Galarza?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
Aye.
I see Beaman Jacinto is back on Council.
We'll move forward now and report to request the council comments. Uh Councilmember Galarza?
Um. Uh very proud of our of our our council today on taking this uh step in supporting, uh you know, this uh, uh pilot program for what it's currently called, Coachella U B I. I think it's been a long time coming and, you know, command and applaud the mayor for taking leadership in this effort and finding the right partners and the funding uh for the, administrative partnership and, you know, education, financial education portion. Uh very much look forward to attending. Uh secondly, wanna applaud and and you know, the Borgo Health, for their, uh even though their ribbon cutting ceremony hasn't happened, uh it's now operational where we have a more accessible pediatric and family, health clinic just down the street from us. Um I grew up on Avenue seventy-six and uh in Oasis and uh and we had a little clinic there for a while. And eventually Borrego came in and started operating it. And so, you know, so uh, you know, from, you know, that experience and now here, just, you know, wanna make sure like we'll continue growing and creating a healthier city and sustainable city. Um and I think we're we're going that direction. Um lastly, I wanna, you know, share publicly my condolences to the families that, um lost uh a family member, the friends that lost a friend. Uh um, you know, over the last week and uh it's 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 tough, right? As as council people, we, uh are increasing access to recreation areas. We are, you know, building more parks. We're partnering with other nonprofits. We're, investing in our community to make sure that we, we prevent these type of things in our community and uh and so, you know, I just wanna share my condolences. You know, we've had family members here who've spoken that that their children have randomly just been, shot at out of, you know, going after just going to the pharmacy. And it's troubling, you know, our our city and uh the Desert Sun did a report on all the cities in the Coachella Valley, and noticed how in the west part of the valley, there's an increase in crime in the last ten years. And our city that probably ten fifteen years ago had a bad rap, we had, we were the safest city in in the last few years. Uh less crime, less, less, less theft. You know, I think at one point we had like one zero homicides in in for 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 certain years. We uh we're we're going that direction and it it's time for, us to come together again and look for solutions. Um but it does, it it the 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 solutions aren't only gonna be provided in the diets. It's also in our homes. And and family wanna make sure we respect each other and treat each other with honor. That was, you know, those are someone's family member, someone's friend, someone's, siblings, you know, and 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 we need to ensure that we stop uh these, the violence, and continue, you know, in 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 together, building a safer city where regardless of your socioeconomic status, and regardless of the color of your skin or the neighborhood you live in, uh in Coachella, whether it's uh the corners of fifty-four or the corners of forty-eight boarding Indio, uh that we're safe wherever we're sitting. And I was, I I was proud, you know, that that that's been the case for a number of years now. We need to go back that direction. That our our city, uh that's something that when I would go out in the community and people would, uh you know, say, tell me, you know, have they, for some reason, people had thought these, this idea that the eastern part of the valley, had more crime and I always had to brag about it. You know, actually, that's the opposite. You know, our city has the least crime, you know, per per pop, per population than in any other city and, um and so uh it it's it's a, it's 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 troubling. We need to come together again and, move forward as as one to make sure our kids grow up somewhere they're proud of. Thank you.
So, Member Delgado?
Yeah, I I echo those sentiments. It is very tragic and and heartbreaking when we got the, you know, message that um, you know, a sixteen-year-old and I believe a seventeen-year-old had lost their lives. It's painful for for everyone, regardless if you know them or not. You know, it hurts. It really does as a community. It hurts. Um you've seen a lot of people come out and really show a lot of support and love uh to both of those families. Um I don't know if we're the safest city, but um I think when we're comparing it with other cities, uh definitely not the safest, but we weren't the uh worst either. And and so I I, you know, I also encourage, of course, as always, is that we, you know, increase uh, you know, recreation and all those things to keep our youth uh busy and um, you know, provide educational ways for them to kind of, um, you know, share what they're going through uh in a way that's positive. And so I I definitely feel for for those families and uh I hope that um we all make a conscious effort as a community to do better. And with that, um also is Gabriel, can we get a, maybe a day where we're gonna come back with the energy study session?
Yes, well, I'll be, I'll be as empty on that.
Okay, thank you. And that's all my comments.
Councilmember Beaman Jacinto, she's the one. She's the one. I thought she was on. Um okay, Count, uh Mayor Proten, Gonzalez.
I would uh be admis if I didn't agree with my colleagues. It's um very troublesome to see the pain in our community and the loss of young, um children clearly need a lot of work with gang, gang prevention, and I think that's where we should put our efforts versus, um uh, well, we have to do something. Um, that being said, I also wanted to give some uh shout out to um our staff in keeping Avenue fifty-four looking really pretty. I've driven by a couple of times and, the trees are um looking good. The shrubs that we planted are nicely rooted and they're green and there's, landscaping is nice. The lights are, uh no, the water system is up. Um and so, I I just think it looked, it turned out really well. So much I wanted to say shout out to you and your staff for doing the, nice finishing touches of making it look all pretty. Um and it it creates beautiful space, of course, for community to get out and walk. It's a little bit cooler in the evenings. Um again, I got, I uh, a constituent of mine called, um me regarding again the noise and it is an issue. People work hard and you wanna get a good night's sleep so you can wake up and be refreshed, um to be able to um go out and earn your pay, right, and and be functional. So another complaint from a constituent that lives, um in a community kind of close where I did, and I will give the information to our city manager who can then uh trust it onto our lieutenant and and hopefully, um something could be done. I believe they've made lots of calls um during the moments. Um and sometimes, it appears it's the same person um from what I gathered from the complaining constituent. Um and so just a friendly reminder that although we wanna celebrate um parties and have beautiful moments with our family to be conscientious and, and considerate with our residents, especially on Sundays when we gotta get back to work. Um personally, I'm pretty tolerant, but you know, everybody has their own. Um I could totally understand, um those that um that need a good night's sleep. Not that I don't, but you know, I I we we manage, right? So but I I do wanna make sure that um, that the 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 uh constituent who is is complaining that she's hurt and that it get um some attention. Just wanna say we're going dark with the month of August. Um City of Coachella staff, enjoy yourselves without having to deal with the council and politics. Go on vacation. Enjoy your families. Um and uh we'll see you guys back in what.
It's September fourteen, something like that. You know, yeah, you know what? Like the uh, the incident with uh the the sheriff, uh the the shooting, I mean, it's what we have is is a pretty senseless deaths. You know, sixteen, eight, seventeen-year-olds, a couple that were, that were murdered. And uh and our condolences, while they, while while they do help, what the family wants is justice. Those were your kids. You would want justice too for those families, for their kids. And so as such, I've uh I've talked to our lieutenant and, our city manager and I let him know, like, hey, we we need to spend what we need to in order to bring these, these folks justice and to bring these these murderers who are out there to justice. You can't have uh people going out and killing people and and not have any repercussion. And so um, you know, I I trust Lieutenant that your staff is doing everything possible. You've got a great team and, any incidents that we've had in Coachella, we've been able to solve. And so I know you guys are gonna be doing the same with these two incidences. Same incident, one incident with two deaths. And then shortly after that, there is a, there was a house party, a big house party, in Coachella where the two more people got shot. And so we we have some element in the city that's festering and and so we need to, we we need to get a a grip and, we need, we need to control that. And so uh again, working with the Sheriff Department or City Manager, we, laid out a directive to just, you know, extra patrol and making sure that it it that that we have a presence and, it always happens a lot during the summer. Um schools out, a lot of people were out. Uh it's hot, you know, and believe it or not, the the statistics show that when it gets hot, there's more crime. When it gets cold, people go in and put on a jacket or hug each other. Crime actually decreases, but but uh but right now, we 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 seem to have just a little bit of an uptake, in crime. And so I know, I know our lieutenant and our team's on it. So I wanna just thank you and encourage you to to do what you can, that it bring justice to families. Yeah, cause if those were your kids, you'd want justice too. Um tomorrow, we have a an important meeting and just to uh, report back, I I I mentioned last meeting that we had a last call hearing. And uh we've made the case about increasing our sphere of influences uh from Avenue fifty-two down to Monroe, uh down to fifty-six and uh the LAFCO board uh continued our items. There was only, there were three jurisdictions that were really in uh involved in the municipal service review. Coachella was one of them. Manifin was another, and I wanna say Hemet might have been another. But tomorrow at eight thirty, we will be back in Riverside, to lay out the case as to why our sphere of influence should extend into uh uh Monroe and Avenue fifty-two. And probably if it doesn't go there, hopefully it goes to Jackson. But for those that are aware, that was Coachella's fear of influence, uh prior to two thousand and six. And moreover, uh that is actually our postal uh area. And so our our, our nine two two three six goes all the way to Monroe fifty-two. And and if you look at, where everybody went to school, everybody went to school at C D A and 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 C V High School that grew up in Coachella and the idea that those, that those, landmarks would be in La Quinta is somewhat offensive to people in Coachella. Um that's not La Quinta. It's never been La Quinta. This is Coachella. And so we we have an obligation to uh get our spear back. And 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 that ultimately is the area of growth where we can move into. With all due respect to, the idea of going up the hill, none of the infrastructures there, the infrastructure, if you look at where Coachella was going is is upon Monroe. It's a, it's been there and our water lines, our sewer lines. And from a, from an equity standpoint, you know, we deserve to win. And if you look at what's going on in that community, it's an area where there's very affluent homes being constructed. And and that's okay. You know, and and affluent homes get to be in Coachella too, uh because we we, you know, build housing for all and, I look at a lot of you that who grew up in Coachella. Some people like Carlos Compos are doing pretty well for themselves and I'd like to get you a house in Coachella, you know, and and and, and make sure that you have a pretty good quality of life sooner or later here in the city. So so FYI, that's, that's what's gonna be happening. Um tomorrow, we, I do have some bad news to report. Uh the the Caltrans uh did not uh agree to partner with us on Avenue fifty, uh on the bridge. We still are gonna submit the application, but without Caltrans. So we're still looking for funding, for our ninety million dollar bridge over the eighty-six expressway. Uh but it's a, it's something that, you know, we'll keep trying and trying again. It's that that, it's the one project that's eluded me for years now. But we've also got some good news. And I meant to put this on my Facebook and mentioned it to to others. And that is that uh, the city of Coachella was was determined to be the southern, the eastern most terminus for the train that's coming into the Coachella Valley. And that's important. And and interestingly, not in, interestingly enough, I got a call from the neighboring city and said, well, what about our stop? I said, well, what about it? It's not our job to, you know, to to talk about your stop. But but I reassure them that the idea is for them to have a stop that's in. And uh and so I'm, but we will make, at least for me and Coachella, gonna make Coachella the our priority. Uh but but nonetheless, that is very, very good news, cause that gets to make the city of Coachella uh an intermodal city. We'll have, we'll have buses on the one hand, and on the other hand, we'll have a train. Now, when is that train coming? Right about ten years. But in government time, ten years is a snap of a finger. It's not a long time. Wait, we move. So I wanna put that on everybody's horizons because some of you may still be elected here. You know, when that train does come to town, but that should be something on your, on your priority, to make sure that the train gets to downtown and the people of Coachella have an opportunity. With that, Mr. City Manager, for yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so what, to reiterate what Madam Mayor Proten indicated, we are going dark in August and will return September fourteenth. Everybody enjoy their summer and thank you for your service and dedication to the city.